I hereby call this meeting to order. Now, the first step we take here is the pledge of allegiance. I studied all week. I forgot how it goes. Is anyone here from the Hamilton Avenue Student Council who could help me with the pledge of allegiance? Please, can you come up here? I tried to study it all week. But I need a little help, I think. Kathleen, I don't know how you remember that each time when you had to do it. Please stand.
Which is to say, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That was awesome. You guys should talk some nice stuff. Good job.
All right.
Now, are we ready for a little music?
I think we are.
Fantastic.
Hey, take a beat, take a stab. Catch your phones ready.
Yeah.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you to the board, Mr. Kelly, for giving us this opportunity. We are so incredibly proud of Hamilton Avenue School. I'm Diane Fox, the principal. I'm so happy to be leading this fantastic school. Thank you to Mrs. Lebrandy, who is our student council advisor and to our student council students for leading us in the pledge, and to our Suzuki students, and to Dr. Danny Hoppy, and to Mrs. Wolf, Mrs. Lisa Wolf, who will lead our students. We are incredibly proud. We are so strong at Hamilton Avenue School, and I'm so happy to be part of the district and part of the school. Thanks for the opportunity.
Moments like that make all the work we put in certainly worth it. Okay, it's always, that was great. If you could stick around, you have to go, that's cool. But if you could stick around, we got a few awards for some of the students, and we have our, we'll bring you up to the student government's spot. So we'll begin, just stay around for the, up to that part, that'd be way cool. If you gotta go, that's cool too. So let's go with the next is the recognition of the All-State musicians. So we need Mr. Taylor and Ms. Newell.
Good evening. Before I introduce this year's All-State musicians, seeing as this is my last opportunity to stand before the board, my retirement in June, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge the impact that the board has had on me, my colleagues, our students, and this community. Among the many things I wish about teaching in Greenwich is working in one of the finest spaces for music teaching and learning to be found anywhere in our state. The Performing Arts Center, the rehearsal halls, the technology lab and recording studio, as well as various practice rooms and support spaces, of course, serve our talented young people every day and will for generations to come. But they also stand as a symbol of the proud tradition of arts education in Greenwich that extends back to the middle of the last century. In the formative stages of the building project, I often employed a sort of rallying cry when speaking to various town bodies, when I asked, if not here, then where, when referring to proposed new facilities that would justify our motto to set the standard of excellence in public education. Happily, you, your predecessors on this board, my colleagues and our administrators, developed and promoted a shared vision that continues today of striving to create and maintain the finest music education program to be found in any American high school. And so for all that you have done to forever change the lives of children by giving them access to a rich and rigorous arts curriculum, I salute you and I thank you. And now it is my pleasure to introduce you, to introduce to you for recognition, the finest young musicians to be found in our department this year. More than 1,000 vocalists and instrumentalists from every public and private high school in Connecticut audition each year for four All-State performing ensembles, band, chorus, jazz ensemble, and orchestra. This is a two-stage process with a first round of auditions in November and a second round in February. The students honored here this evening have spent many years working hard to become fine musicians, and although it is primarily their own passion and dedication that has led them to this impressive achievement, their efforts have been well supported by their parents and families, by our exceptionally strong K-12 music faculty, by our school administrations, and as I've said, by our Board of Education, all of which place a high priority on the arts. I'm pleased to present the 30 outstanding musicians who were selected to represent Greenwich High School in this year's All-State Music Festival, which took place in Hartford at the end of March. As I call your name, please come to the front to be congratulated by the superintendent and board chair and remain here until everyone has been called up. Please hold your applause until I have called everyone up. Thank you. We have four members of the All-State Band this year. Chesway, who's known familiarly as CCG, plays the flute, and I believe she's online, and there will be a bunch of people watching from home. But there are some here tonight. Ethan Plummer is a tenor saxophonist. And he's here tonight. Hanon Stern plays oboe. And Harrison Wolf is a tuba player. We have 23 members of the All-State Chorus this year, many of whom are here tonight. In alphabetical order, they are Gregory Bound, Ethan Cooper, Anna Dobbins, Annabelle Edgles, Michelle Farone, Eve Tesco, Beatrice Healy, Maya Itu, Miu Ito, Andy Kaplan, Yenu Cook, Cindy Lee, Julia McRae, Christopher Messis, Joe Nagai, Sebastian Ojeda, Luke Obse, Madeline Phillips, Alexander Robles, Delilah Ruiz, Ella Rib, Utah Takahashi, and Jacob Winston. We had three more students as part of All-State. We had a member of the jazz ensemble. Iris Iraqi is a trumpet player, and she made the jazz band this year. I don't think she's here tonight, but we can salute her nonetheless. And in the orchestra, we had Luca Dolgo, a violist, and Benny Grunbaum, a cellist.
Thanks, everybody. That was cool. Now we went to the sports world with Peter Georgiou, our athletic director, who's gonna talk about the winter sports, All-State athletes. He's gonna introduce them. Did you bring the fencers like you talked about? We were gonna have a fencing exhibition on the stage, but they were busy.
Good evening, Superintendent Jones, Sheriff Chris and Kelly, Board of Education members, and everyone in attendance, both here and at home. I'd like to thank you all for taking the time to recognize our winter season All-State High School student athletes. The Connecticut High School, Connecticut High School School Coach Association chose the following student athletes in their respective sports. Students, when I call your name, please stand and remain standing. I ask the audience to hold the applause until after everyone is recognized. In cheer, we have Claire Kilcohen. For cheer also, Grace Trigger. Lauren Civatella, Lauren also was all academic. And Ciara Rollins. For diving, we have Jaden Satir and Whitaker Grover. For fencing, we have Erin Bailey, who also won the state championship this year in women's saber. Big accomplishment. We also have in fencing, Massimo Tozzi. Tim Valentin. In track, we have Caleb Yu. Erin Williams. Asme Daplin. Gianluca Bianchi. Harrison Goldberg. And Julia Gustafson. And Caitlin Fay. In skiing, we have Tommy Yvara. In swimming, we have Aiden Bukaria. Devin Belmont. Felix Flaxton. Ioane Malagalezi. Keegan Clark. Liam Flaherty and Noah Barrett. Some of the ones that were in attendance are also trisport athletes, so they're still continuing right now in the spring sports. Here, we get a round of applause for our All-State team.
Looking good, guys.
At this point, I'd like to introduce someone who I feel does not need any introduction in the community of Greenwich. This person has made a positive impact on students for over 50 years, have gone through the Greenwich Public School system at the high school, as well as the swimmers he's coached and influenced. He is here today to recognize the members of this year's FCAC, CIAC, and Open Double L State Champions, the Greenwich High School Boys Swimming and Diving Team, Coach Terry Lowe.
Chairman Kelly, members of the board, it's my pleasure to introduce the terrific young men of the 2023 GHS Boys Swimming and Diving Team, who made our championship run through counties, state Double Ls, and state open possible. First up, Noah Barrett. Come on up. A versatile sophomore who was on the freestyle ankle leg of both the gold medal medley and 200 freestyle relays, but would be playing multiple roles in the 2024 team. Next, senior captain Evan Belmont, flyer in sprint freestyle, flyer on the gold medal All-American medley relay, and a member of the Double L A qualifying 200 free relay, off to Monmouth University to swim next year. Junior Gregory Bound, who rebounded from about with mono to become a surprise contributor at Double Ls with his butterfly performance. Senior captain Aiden Bukaria, All-American breast stoker in IEMR, breast stoker on the All-American medley relay and anchor of the All-American 400 freestyle relay, MVP of the state Double L meet. He'll be swimming at Boston College next year. Colin Bukaria, one of the few freshmen in the state to go all the way to the state open, multi-talented, his event was the individual medley. Zachary Chalnick, a senior back stoker who experienced his first state open this year and will be off to the University of Arizona in the fall. Felix Flaxton, junior and captain-elect, one of the top two distance swimmers in the state, who also came through with outstanding sprint performance in the 400 freestyle relay, making a win by a mere 12 tenths of a second possible. Mitchell Goldstein, a senior captain, middle distance and distance freestyle, who made his mark at the states this year in the 200 free, off to Cornell this fall. Whitaker Grover, a senior diver, who is not only a four-time county champion, but also a four-time All-American diver, an academic All-State athlete. Whitaker will be diving at Yale. Senior Alexander Kilco, who's state events with the 200 and 500 freestyle this year. One of the team's FCX Student Athletes of the Year, who will be attending Georgia Tech this fall. Senior Charlie Gosinski, a water polo player who made his mark at the state open in both the 50 and 100 freestyle, will be playing water polo at Santa Clara. Andrew Lo, a junior whose sprint speed had him experience his first state championship meet this year in the 100 freestyle. Senior Yuwan Magalakay Libsa, a water polo convert and a first-year competitive swimmer, whose crazy speed shocked his more experienced teammates, eventually earning a spot on our gold medal 200 free relay. Win McCarthy, an up-and-coming freshman back stoker, who surged from the JV squad to become a Double L finalist in the 100 backstroke. Luke Mendelson, a sophomore whose dramatic improvement brought him from unknown into the top four at Double Ls of both the individual medley and 100 breast stroke. Jaden Satir, a flashy senior diver, who was a Double L All-State performer and who is now a three-year All-American. Jack Smith, a freshman distance swimmer whose state event was the 500 freestyle. Jacob Winston, a junior diver who has steadily improved up the ranks during his three years to earn All-American credentials in his state open performance this year. Haddon Wood, a determined sophomore butterfly who made his first state open appearance this year. And finally, Alex Yu, a senior who in the final weeks of his senior season converted from butterfly to distance freestyle to become a surprise state Double L finalist, also an FCX All-Academic competitor this year. Let me end by just thanking our wonderful diving coach Kevin Thompson and assistant swim coaches Joan Lynch and James Romali, who held the program together while I battled COVID for two weeks during the heart of the season. This is our state champion swim team.
Wow, awesome. Did you hear some of those schools that were announced, by the way? Wow. Great job. Boy, Terry can really get you into great schools, can't he? He is good. Okay, now we're gonna recognize our state champion chess team. Mr. Ramirez, please come up here. We were meant to have one of the board members, fancies, we're not having it, by the way, but one of our board members fancies themselves quite a chess player, Cody Kittle. And he couldn't make it tonight. He was gonna take on our, our high school champion. I think he didn't come because he didn't want to lose to our high school champion. I think that was the case, so.
Good evening. Thank you to the Board of Ed for inviting us tonight. My name is Adrian Ramirez, and I'm the advisor to the GHS Chess Club and Chess Team. Since the club's founding in November 2020, as a vital point of connection during the pandemic, the club has grown over to 200 members today. In March, the team captured the state championship, led by international master Max Liu and team members Isaac de Cruz, Carl Omen, Victoria Lu, and Elias Orman. Or, sorry. Following this, five members traveled to Washington DC to compete at the National High School Championship, where notable results included a fourth-place finish by Max Liu in the overall championship section and an overall strong showing from the team. It truly has been an incredible time for the GHS chess program, and we're very proud of what these students have achieved. I would like to introduce Max Liu to give some brief comments.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. I'll be brief, but just to continue a bit where he left off, I'd like to highlight the club's new volunteer program at New Lebanon School and starting next week at Hamilton Avenue School, where we offer chess enrichment using sets we brought back from the national championships to donate to the programs. In these programs, we teach the kids to think critically and consider consequences before acting, which helps enhance the development of their social and relationship-building skills. However, more importantly, we enjoy sharing our love for chess with others. Finally, we would like to extend an invitation to the Greenwich community, including all teachers and faculty, as well as high school and interested middle school students, as we look to host our second annual GHS Chess Championship, and we hope that this event will serve as a bridge between the high school, middle schools, and the community at large. After we are done with this, we will also give each of the BOE members and Dr. Jones a chess board, so they can hopefully practice at home. Thank you again for the support we received from Care and Foster in Student Activities, Mrs. Laura Jean Waters, and the GHS Media Center team, and once again to the Board of Education for the gracious invitation for us to share with you today. Thank you.
As I call your name, please come to the front to be congratulated by the superintendent and board chair and remain here until everyone has been called up. Max Liu. Victoria Lu. Isaac. Isaac de Cruz. Elias Orrell. And Carl Omen.
Oh, thank you.
We hope to see you there.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Okay, now another highlight that we're looking forward to tonight is the Distinguished Teachers Awards. Laura, can you say a few words, considering you represent that committee?
I would love to. I would like to say that it was my privilege to serve on this committee. Its purpose is to honor the educators who truly give of themselves each day for the betterment of our students and our school community as a whole. It was a pleasure to read about their commitment to their craft and the joy they have for seeing their students grow and thrive. And with that, I want to turn the microphone over to our distinguished teacher chair, Stacy Lovelace.
Thank you, Laura, and thank you to all the committee members that were a part of this most familiar, fulfilling committee work, I have to say. Good evening. I'm Stacy Lovelace, and I am the chair of the Distinguished Teacher Awards Committee this year. This is our 38th year of celebrating exceptional teaching in Greenwich. Selection of the six distinguished teachers is carried out by our 20-member committee. Actually, it was 19 because one had a baby, which includes representatives from the Board of Education, PTA Council, Greenwich Education Association, Greenwich Organization of School Administrators, and members of the community, including representatives from the Kiwanis and other community organizations, parents, and many previously named distinguished teachers of Greenwich. It is my honor to present to you six individuals who are passionate about the work they do and who strive to inspire our students to become lifelong learners, problem solvers, and innovators. When I call your name, if you guys would all come up, and I don't know that you're sitting in arranged in alphabetically, so you might as well all come back up. But it is my pleasure to announce the distinguished teachers for 2023. Please stand. Aaron John, New Lebanon School, first grade. Gaspar Lapari, Western Middle School, English, Social Studies, and Tech. Aaron LaFaro, Central Middle School, Music. Joan O'Day, Greenwich High School, Social Worker. Carol Pugliano Martin, New Lebanon School, ALP, Language Arts. And Maria Woodward, Central Middle School, Mathematics. These six, our 2023 distinguished teachers, display an extraordinary commitment to elevating their students, schools, and the entire district. The measures each one takes remarkably exceeds expectations. On behalf of the Distinguished Teachers Award Committee, I congratulate all of you. You are most deserving of this award. The entire GPS community is welcome to celebrate our amazing teachers at the Distinguished Teachers Award Ceremony here on Thursday, May 4th at 4:30. Please join us.
You guys are awesome. I don't want Mitch to get upset again if I skip over him, so this time we're gonna have the student government, please come up. Mitch Goldstein, the student body vice president, will begin. Last meeting, I skipped over him, and he stood up and.
Good evening, board members and meeting attendees. My name is Mitch Goldstein, and I am the student body vice president. I want to start by congratulating all the students on their recent achievements, from music to chess to swimming and diving. It's amazing to see just how much high-level work is being done at GHS. I'd like to start by taking some time to update you on the exciting events and initiatives happening at GHS. I'm thrilled to announce that the Environmental Action Committee has been working tirelessly to promote environmental awareness and sustainability among the student body. The committee has been holding daily activities in the student center to make announcements and making announcements every morning to increase excitement for the annual Live Like Luke Beach Cleanup taking place at Todd's Point this Saturday. Next, I'd like to mention that tomorrow is Safe Driving Day at Greenwich High School. Students and staff members have been working with the Greenwich Gems to create a day focused on the importance of safe driving. to create a day focused on the importance of safe driving. I know that students are excited for the many events that are planned for tomorrow. In addition to Safe Driving Day, students are also getting excited about the junior prom that is coming up on April 29th. Our students are eagerly anticipating this event and have been busy preparing for it. From prom posing to one another, to finalizing their prom outfits, our juniors are looking forward to a night of fun and celebration with their classmates. On a more academic note, our senior class is also preparing for the next phase of their academic journey. As they prepare to end their high school careers, they are getting ready to begin their senior internships and projects. We are proud of our seniors for their hard work and dedication, and we know that they will continue to make positive contributions to society in their chosen fields. Lastly, I'd like to talk a little bit about the Food Services Department at GHS. We recently sent out a survey to collect student input on a multitude of topics. Firstly, we have noticed that students are now spending less time waiting in lines and more time eating thanks to more stations opening up in the cafeteria. Secondly, we received many responses to our new Sandwich of the Day program, which will allow students to design and name a pre-made sandwich that will be sold in the cafeteria for one day. Finally, after our turn from the break, after we've, since the return of from the break, one of the sandwich stations has been replaced by a salad station, which has been received extremely well by the students. On behalf of the student body, I want to thank you all for your time and I look forward to working with you guys over the last two months of the school year, I guess, right? At the next meeting, it'll be me and someone else.
Isabella Gega, our Student Body President. Don't leave until Isabella finishes, then you could all leave.
Oh, they're leaving. I'd like to start off to express my pride for Greenwich and Greenwich High School. And thank you to all the teachers. I know we just went through distinguished teachers, but I am just, I get warm inside because I recognize some of those teachers and it's just, it's so nice to see how they're recognized and to go through the entire GPS, all 12 years and beyond in preschool. It's just, it's very exciting. So, good evening, Chairman Kelly, Dr. Jones, members of the Board, and meeting attendees. I am Isabella Gega, Student Body President at Greenwich High School. Following a restful April break, GHS is preparing for a smooth transition past the finish line, which includes our beloved AP exams. As we approach this time, we are grateful that both administrators and teachers will be accommodating to our every needs. This includes transitioning into review sections and supplying review materials that were well, that were very well received during midterms. Furthermore, concerning that many students take more than one AP exam, we hope for flexibility during the first two weeks of May, mainly to establish a manageable workload and flexibility to make up any missed assignments. Finally, we know students will take advantage of the school psychologists and social workers to successfully navigate this stressful time, and we are grateful that the school provides techniques to handle the load. Administrators did a fantastic job during midterm week, and we hope similar support is implemented throughout AP exams. As per usual, our class officers are searching for ways to unite their grade through fun activities. As a result, our senior class have been working tirelessly to host diverting senior events as our time together comes to an end. As we prepare for the dreaded yet precious day of May 12th, we are optimistic for the upcoming unofficial Senior Skip Day, which might or might not be tomorrow, our senior students' tradition, which begins next week, and senior prom, which is June 3rd. As always, we have graduation to commemorate our time together. But as Mitch and I leave our legacy, we hope that our incoming class officers and student government leaders will continue forth with the progress that has been made. The new student government election season has begun. The election application was due this past Tuesday. Prospective candidates attended a mandatory meeting Wednesday to review campaign rules and deadlines. To reiterate from last month, we have decided to continue our newly organized committee structure but are actively searching for ways to improve the efficiency and effectiveness. In addition to elect positions this spring, students will be able to apply for class reps in the fall. We hope that these leaders commit themselves to student government for the betterment of our school environment and take advantages of the opportunities that these positions bring. Finally, congratulations to the students recognized for their commitment to the community. Greenwich Schools announced the 2023 Community Service Awards, and we are beyond proud of their efforts to improve our community and Greenwich as a whole. As always, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight, and I look forward to meeting with you in a month's time.
Excellent, thank you. He's great. Oh, you heard that, sorry. Anyone who hung around to listen to the students and see the awards, you can go home and take care of your kids. Sorry, Lil, I'm cutting everybody loose before you come. Next is our GEA president, Lil Perron. Please come on up and say a few words.
Sorry, Erin. Good evening. My name is Lilian Perron, President of the Greenwich Education Association. Like to, what an outstanding and exciting evening. My friend Daisy, so glad to see Hamilton Ave and Suzuki students. My boy Pete, an athletic program. Patrick Taylor and the music program. Andrew Ramirez and the chess state champions. And Terry Lowe. Terry, I have to share a funny, quick story. You are a legend all over the state because I was having cement done for my pool and I was supposed to be picking out a color. And when the person knew I was from Greenwich, all he wanted to talk about, "Do you know Terry Lowe?" I coached swimming at Pomperon. Do you know Terry Lowe? So you are a legend, my friend. And to all our distinguished teachers, we know that all our teachers are distinguished, but these are the creme de la creme that rose up to the top for this ceremony that's going to come up in May. So I have some important information I'd like to share with all of you here and at home. While my GEA members are aware of my activities through my VP of Communication and my Board of Directors on my monthly meeting, I don't think that the, maybe the parents and the Greenwich community know some of the things that I do. So I'd like to take a quick stroll into my world tonight. So people may think that the union is on opposite sides of administration and the board. Far from it. A lot of things I do is in collaboration at the state level to make things better for all teachers and for the Greenwich community. Starting with my first day of my presidency, I worked hard to build a strong collaborative relationship with our Board of Education. I've worked hard and very closely with Dr. Jones through COVID and when she was also the HR Director. Any crisis or problems that arose, we worked it out together. We may not have agreed on some things, but we always tried to do what is best for our students, our staff, and Greenwich as a whole. My executive board also works with communicating with Dr. Jones' cabinet in the same manner. This past year, I've been very active lobbying up at the state Capitol, sharing in the trenches experiences and stories and answering the legislators' questions. Over these past three months, talking with Connecticut lawmakers on the landmark legislation, House Bill 6884, an act concerning the recruitment and retention enhancement of teachers, teaching profession. There's lots of things packed into this bill, but some of the thing, positive things impacting teachers. COVID pension credit, statewide minimum teacher salary funded by the state to help districts, teacher tax credit, and EDTPA for ineffective assessments of student teachers' informants, and the Teachers' Bill of Rights. This bill passed March 24th, is now moving to the Appropriations Committee. I testified how the CDC's, the Connecticut State Department of Ed, had failed us and all the districts in the state of Connecticut. They pushed out a program with known flaws, glitches, and added hours of extra work, especially for our special education staff. I attended a workshop last month with many other Fairfield County teachers. We spoke with the maker of the program. We shared our stories of all the glitches. And I have a whole three-page list of more stuff to stand up to the Connecticut State Department of Ed. And now they're doing the same thing with the Right to Read Act. I also testified the legislative body thanking them. I'm also on CEA Executive Board and I'm up lobbying with them. So I thanked the legislative body because what we were asking for is an advisory board for the State Department of Ed because the people up there making decisions may not have been in the trenches for a long period of time. So that has passed and I thank them. We now have five, 10 teachers total, five that are the state teacher of the year, and five will be appointed teachers. This is to help them, to help in the trenches, to guide them in the decision-making process so these things don't happen to our town and to our teachers. I went the other day and talked to my Mark D'Amico and Kim Palladino. We were concerned about the Right to Read Act and what was going on. And we don't know whether the waiver gets approved, so there's a lot of things going on. They were, we were concerned about a full plate of new learning for our pre-K and we reviewed a lot, a lot of training days for June and in August and understand why that the direction that the town is going on the reading program, they have to do it because the state is so bogged down, they can't even get through all the waivers. So I'd like to thank Mark and Kim for taking the time and sharing all that with us. And to close up, my friend Joe, Chairman Kelly, I'm a little concerned on some budget, on your budget proposals, three and four, fiscal oversight, providing school budget that supports quality education programs and facilities, and providing a school budget that supports quality education programs. Now, I've never done this, but I feel I must. I'm calling out the BET and the Finance Budget Committee. I sat in a meeting with them. I do not know who these people are. I don't know, well, I know their names because obviously I was there. I don't know their political affiliation, but what I heard and what I witnessed was deplorable. Their deal with numbers, our children, our schools, it's our gift. They're our future, and all decisions should be based on honesty and numeric numbers, not subjectivities. I sat there and they knew who I was. And most of the members were very polite and nice. But these three individuals really need to be off that committee. It was based on subjectivity. They made rude statements. If it hurts Dr. Jones, then I'm voting for it. Let's get our own teacher and stick it to the, stick it to the, get our own lawyer and stick it to the teachers. I could go on and on with things that I don't want to say more, but I, I'm going to call them out. And, and if anyone else in this town, I'm asking the parents, that is deplorable. It's duplicit in nature. We don't tolerate it in our schools. We, we are honest, and they need to, those three individuals need to be off of that committee. Thank you, and I hope the parents call Board of Ed, I'm sorry, not Board of Ed, Town Hall. It's, that's not how you run a town. We make budgets and every, I'm not feeling the love. They cut, they cut, they cut, and maybe there's too much subjectivity.
Okay, now we go PTAC Francis Wu-Nobe. Hello, Francis, how are you tonight?
Hello, this is Francis Wu-Nobe, mom of three GPS kids and 2022-2023 President of the Greenwich Parent Teacher Advisory Council. This week kicks off National Volunteer Appreciation Week. And with that, I want to honor and recognize the Board of Education volunteers sitting on my right and on my left. Please enjoy a sweet treat. Homemade and presented, not homemade by me, presented by Kristen Harlock, Robin Letter, and Leader, and Catherine McCursie. Also, thank you to the Town of Greenwich Volunteers serving the BET, the RTM, the Building Committees, and most importantly, the hundreds of PTA parent volunteers sharing their time, talents, and treasures with our 15 Greenwich Public Schools. Thank, thank you all for what you do every day. Turning to hot topics in tonight's consent agenda, I share five thoughts. Number one, we appreciate safety first and look forward to an explanation of Monday's bus situation. Kids standing on tree corners, parents scrambling and scratching their heads at the cryptic early morning email. We look forward to hearing more about that. Number two, PTAC promised to stand with our Greenwich Public School families and advocate for full funding for our school buildings. We sincerely appreciate the many families who spoke and the countless hours invested by this Board of Education, GPS Administration, and the Building Committees to determine the shape, size, and scope of the proposed structures. PTAC will speak with the RTM Education Committee on May 1st and to the full RTM on May 8th as the town finalizes the 2023-2024 budget. Our students need more than piecemeal Band-Aids that make a bad situation worse. With regards to the Central Middle School specifically, PTAC is very concerned that reopening the ed specs to nickel and dime the auditorium that we are literally using right now, the cafeteria, music rooms, will cause the town to miss the June 30th, 2023 State of Connecticut grant deadline and in pick impact, the planned June 2024 groundbreaking. We are here tonight at CMS, a school that was found to be unsafe. The entire community of the Town of Greenwich needs to get this building rebuilt speedily in a way that meets or exceeds educational and community needs ASAP. The final cost, based on facts and professional expertise rather than political whim, will be the best and the right investment for the town and for our families. Number three, PTAC is interested to learn more about the K-8 Parent Teacher Conference included on the proposed 2023-2024 school calendar. How exactly will middle school conferences work? And what will those conferences cover? For elementary or middle school, the meetings should be a substantive, two-way information exchange between parents and teachers, including academic, developmental, social, emotional growth insights, and not simply a recitation of the grades or testing data that parents can otherwise get on Aspen and Lincoln. And please be sure to allow for early morning or evening slots for those parents who cannot manage school day meetings. Number four, PTAC appreciates the innovative ideas brought forward to support pre-K, ELA, and racial imbalance. We sincerely appreciate the professional expertise, thought leadership, and due diligence brought to bear. Please keep up the good thinking and also create accessible materials and forums for parents. Stay tuned for further thoughts about the six-to-six idea from our PTAC DEI chairs. Five, PTAC is interested in the school donations being reviewed today. We appreciate the community investing in our schools and have received positive feedback from our schools regarding these donations. Specifically, the Hamilton Avenue PTA is in favor of using the Hamilton Avenue School property, field, court, and parking facilities for the St. Rock Church's annual feast in August. The festival is an annual highlight for the local community. The St. Rock's Church has been a good neighbor and a strong supporter of the Hamav PTA. In closing, May 9th is the annual PTA Council Greenwich Membership Meeting, where we vote in the 2023-2024 slate. If you or someone you know is a PTA volunteer who wants to make district-wide impact, please contact PTAC VP nominating to learn more. And most importantly, congratulations and thank you to our distinguished teachers honored tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Francis. Okay, it's a community comment time. The first four, if you could line up over there, Jackie Holman, Rachel Coven, Amy Muth, and Claire Kilgallen. Please come up and make your comments. Those who are called, please just wait over there so we can move through this quickly. Hey, Jackie.
Good evening, Board of Education members and Dr. Jones, and welcome back from spring break. I'm here tonight because I'm hoping you could address parents' concerns and questions over some of the books that have been found in the high school library. I was frankly surprised not to receive any response to the email I sent you about the book about choke, especially since I included a screenshot of a page in the book describing an explicit rape fantasy. A page I think most reasonable people would agree is too explicit to be read in a public meeting like this, let alone to be found in a public high school library. Here are some of the questions that parents are asking. How did that book... How did that book end up in the library in the first place? That was over twenty years ago. What was the process that was utilized when it comes to selecting library books? And who makes the final decision on which books end up on the shelves? I know previously you've mentioned that you've assembled a book committee, but parents are wondering if you could be more transparent about that process. For instance, can you tell us how often the committee meets? What books have been reviewed and how long the process takes on average to review a book? What books are on the review list and how do parents add a book to the list? And will completed evaluations be available so parents can understand the rationale for your decisions? And most importantly, how can concerned parents get more involved? The other issue I wanted to talk about tonight is the high school sociology class. And they just had an assignment this week that included watching a video from Vox, which is a very left-leaning website, and this is according to the media bias chart that Greenwich Schools uses to rate political bias and accuracy of websites. So they're calling this a left-leaning website. The video was entitled, "Is Meritocracy a Myth?", and ultimately reached the conclusion that yes, in fact, meritocracy is a myth. And then implied that this was due to systemic racism, even though ironically, the videographer herself clearly benefited from meritocracy. I'm curious if students were provided with any alternative viewpoints from right-leaning websites on the topic of systemic racism, especially since a left-leaning website with obvious political bias was chosen for this assignment? Or was this the only perspective that was provided? And the reason that I ask this is because it gets to the heart of the issue of subtle indoctrination of students into a liberal mindset. And the sociology class in particular seems to provide a rather unbalanced view of the world, espousing progressive values at the expense of conservative values. Parents obviously expect educators to provide balanced views in the classroom, especially on politically charged topics like systemic racism, and would appreciate hearing how you plan to mitigate the political bias that's already been introduced into this class. Thank you.
Thank you. Rachel? No, Rachel? Is she online?
She's online, Joe. I just allowed her to speak. She should be able to speak now.
Oh, hi there. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I'm actually on my way back into Central Middle School. I represent the neighbors who live up on the hill behind Central Middle School. And I just want to say that we're very much in support of building a new Central Middle School. As a lifelong resident here in Greenwich, this school definitely needs an upgrade. But we are concerned by the manner for which it, it's happening and the process. For what I understand, the renderings that have been passed around have it such that the school is going to be placed right up on the hill that it impacts the most neighbors in the neighborhood. And none of us had been notified about what was going on. None of us had been allowed to have any input in the designs. Again, we support a new Central Middle School, but we're concerned about a number of issues. One being the fact that there's going to be rock blasting, that the fact that trees are going to be taken down there. If anyone's walked the woods there, it's an area where there's a ton of wildlife. And there's a lot of concern about what's going to happen to that area. And we are concerned about the process for which this has happened. No one has notified us. And also, quite frankly, the lack of transparency with regards to the budget. We've been told that this school is going to be larger and larger, and we are just concerned the impact that it's going to have on the neighborhood. Again, we are in something, a Central Middle School. We just asked for everyone to slow down, take a minute to consider community input and taxpayers, and let's all come together to build a school that's great for the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Amy?
Hello, my name is Ami Muth, one of the PTAC DEI co-chairs, and I'm speaking on behalf of my co-chair Alyssa Van Oss and our PTAC DEI Committee. We would first like to start off by reminding everyone that this is a big month for celebrating diversity. April is Diversity Month, National Arab American History Month, World Autism Day, as well as the celebration of world religions, Ramadan, Passover, and Easter. At the end of the month is the Gathering of Nations Powwow. Where more than 500 native tribes meet and celebrate various traditions and cultures. We also encourage you to mark June fourth from one to three in your calendars for the Greenwich Pride Celebration at Town Hall. It will be a great event. We are so happy to see racial imbalance on tonight's agenda with some potential options remedying the long-term racial imbalance and impending imbalance in our public schools, especially with the increasing imbalance in New Lebanon. We understand that addressing this problem is a very difficult task, especially if redistricting or altering attendance zones is off the table, and look forward to hearing more innovative and creative solutions such as the ones being presented tonight. We strongly believe that teaching our students in a diverse educational environment better prepares them for a multicultural work environment, improves confidence, promotes empathy, and reduces prejudice, decreases bullying, and improving mental health, improves student achievement, and fosters creativity. The racial imbalance data presented in the past has included more detailed information, including how many students are currently utilizing magnet programs. It would be helpful to see similar data on the racial and socioeconomic makeup of students receiving special education services, GenEd, and the OUT programs. This would be helpful in considering whether Western will continue to stay more balanced, given that it is not admitting magnet students this year. When we tried to find how other towns addressed this problem, there weren't any easy answers or strategies, but it seemed more successful outcomes came when the towns who actively engaged their entire parent community, as well as obtaining outside consultant to help guide the process. There are multiple questions in our committee as to whether the six-six model would be for the entire district or just as a magnet idea for one school to address the racial imbalance. In either scenario, if GPS were to pile six and six-year-round model, what would that calendar year look like? And how would GPS address the needs a non-traditional calendar would require? Would we provide programming during the longer vacation periods that is affordable for our families who may be more limited by the ability to take time off or to finance appropriate childcare?
Thirty seconds.
While the community seems to prefer neighborhood schools, a more robust magnet program may also be beneficial, including a STEM magnet or something equally appealing to attract families to their neighborhoods. We encourage the Board to find ways to engage the entire community, not just the loudest and most involved, but especially those that are underrepresented, underrepresented and unheard. Further, we wonder how much GPS can realistically do on its own to shift the racial imbalance in our schools. This four-page report, we need greater town support.
Okay, Claire. And next it would be Michael Wilken, Marcia Lawrence, and Richard Davis is on deck.
Good evening. My name is Claire Kilgallen. I just want to start out, there's a lot of recognition tonight, but I want to recognize you. I want to recognize all the work that you do. I, I only know a small sliver attending these meetings. I appreciate it being on the building committee, and I just want to say thank you. Since I'm up here on a different topic, I will speak about Central Middle School Building Committee. I am on it. I want to let the community know that we have published our quarterly progress report to the RTM, which is available, as is all public information, at the project website, That's right, we have a vanity URL. A second community forum is slated for May, dates to be published in the media. I know that this, a building process is not typical, doesn't happen very often in town for schools. So people, you know, it's not natural to understand what the progression is. I just want to, hearing the other speaker say that this is a start of a public process. There is so much process, hearings, forums, you name it, for you to be heard. I don't want anybody to think they are not being heard. It is not the case. We are just the start. I just want to raise a concern regarding Central. Several people reached out to me today with regard to an email sent around by a Republican BET member in which it was offered that CMS be demolished this building prior to the rebuild. It went on to suggest that CMS students could be housed at Julian Curtis in the interim, while JC students would be spread out to other schools throughout the district. This kind of costly scheme does not pass the straight-faced test financially or educationally, but are being suggested as viable solutions. GPS, parents, and our community as a whole should be made aware of them now and rebuke them. To be clear, this kind of thinking is antithetical to the best interests of our students and our community as a whole. Shifting to Western fields, I want to speak to the hundreds of families in the Western and Byram community and throughout town that support the Boards-approved, thank you, and state deep and EPA-approved plan that took years to get to this point. I know you will be submitting a second application for the project and know that we look forward to, and we'll be there to show our support in planning and zoning. And thank you to all the teachers. I just have to give the shout-out to the West Side. And I want to thank all the teachers for all they do. I want to thank everybody in this community, including the bus drivers, including the teachers and staff. We all do work together. You help our kids. Everybody in this room helps our kids, volunteers. We are volunteers, staff, drivers, everybody. So we're all here for our kids. Thank you. Have a good night.
Michael Wilken?
Hi, my name is Michael Wilken, and I had some prepared remarks, but I'm going to address this to Claire. I went to a building subcommittee, design subcommittee meeting yesterday, and I was, the first thing we were told is that this is not a public hearing. It's a meeting and you won't get to speak. We are direct neighbors to the school. Nobody told us they were going to place the new school essentially in our backyard. Now, everybody says not in my backyard, except it is in our backyard. So I don't get it. I'm actually hurt. I love Greenwich. It's a great community. The past, I lived in Westchester. I never voted against a school budget. I think that children, schoolchildren are paramount. They're the future. And there should be a new school building. So, and I'm not concerned about financial concerns especially. I don't believe in overbuilding, putting a building that is overbuilt in a community where it's, it's not needed. If you think about it, Central Middle School is what, fifty years old? And now it's totally obsolete, falling down. Why build a bigger building than you need? Maybe build the building where you can expand it in the direction where the existing school is. What's being limited here is the imagination of the people who are building it. I don't know if it's the architects. I don't know if it's that they're getting direction from the building design committee. I don't know what it is, but people are not being consulted. People's concerns are not being addressed. I sent the email to the committee and I got back something that said, "Thank you for your mail. Go to our website for information." The notice for yesterday's subcommittee meeting was placed on the calendar on the eighteenth. It said that the meeting was going to be held on the seventeenth, and the meeting was actually the nineteenth. So, so much for public engagement. It doesn't exist. They, when they give you, and also Claire didn't mention, that yesterday, the design subcommittee approved citing the building on the north. And it would be essentially a three-story building, maybe technically, but they don't think so. It'll be a two-and-a-half-story building, but it's in reality a three-story building to any common eye. You have the first level, then you have two more levels, one, two, three. Even I can add that up, three. So I don't get it. There's no engagement. There's no opportunity.
Thirty seconds.
The presentations, the reports are just that, a presentation, not an engagement. So the process is terrible. The building where it is will take down trees. The graphics of the buildings that you'll see on the website are really false. It shows beautiful, beautiful trees, and yet eight months of the year, those trees don't exist. Plus, when you build it into that hill, you'll be taking down many of those trees. It's literally in people's backyards.
Time.
Okay, thank you for listening.
Marcia Lawrence? Online now. Richard Davis?
Is Marshall online?
Good evening. Thank you, Chairman of the Board, Board members, my union colleagues, and the members, the parents. Thank you. My name is Richard Davis. I'm the president of the Transport Workers Union Local 100. Local 100 is comprised of more than forty-two thousand hard-working men and women in transportation and tourism industries. We operate and maintain the bus and subway system in New York City. We operate and maintain school bus operations in New York and Connecticut. And we also run a big bus, double-decker tours across the country. Our members include bus drivers, monitors, and mechanics employed in First Student Transportation Company. As you know, First Student has the contract to provide bus service for your district, for your children in your district. Nadia, my court, has been a school bus driver for Greenwich for twenty-three years. She's loved by the children, the parents, and she's very professional. During her twenty-three years on the job, Nadia has not had a single accident. But earlier this month, without warning, Nadia had her job taken away. Deputy Superintendent Elizabeth Ann Carrillo told First Student in a letter that she followed Nadia's bus one afternoon last month. She alleged Nadia's bus crossed the yellow line multiple times. So just like that, Carrillo certified, decertified Nadia. That means she can no longer drive a bus in your district. The bottom line is Nadia had her job taken away based on one alleged observation. No prior warning, no ability to defend herself, no hearing, no due process, nothing. Nadia was treated like a second-class citizen, and that is completely unacceptable. To us, this treatment shows a lack of respect, not just for Nadia, but our fellow coworkers and fellow bus drivers. That, too, is unacceptable. I want to point out that Nadia's bus had a camera that shows the road through the rear emergency exit and window, but the district did not even bother to watch the video before taking this draconian action. I also want to be clear, our problem is not with First Student.
Thirty seconds.
Our problem is with the district administration. And the district refused. Even though First Student said it would retrain Nadia. Our contract allows an arbitration process, and that's what we're asking for, to pick an arbitrator, present evidence, give testimony, and let the arbitrator make a fair and binding decision. That's what we propose, and we will even pay for the arbitrator. So just to make it clear, we won't dispute the fact that the superintendent has the right to decertify bus drivers, but that doesn't make it right, and it doesn't make it fair. Hey, that's what I make that point. Does it make it right or fair?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Julie Fariniers, Fariniers, sorry Julie. I think I got it better the last time. Sorry.
Good evening, Chairman Kelly, Superintendent Jones, members of the Cabinet and the BOE. My name is Julie Fariniers, and I am the Executive Director of the Greenwich Alliance for Education. The Alliance is the only nonprofit in Greenwich one hundred percent focused on our public school students, teachers, families, and alumni. This is a great night. I just knew it when I dropped off the distinguished teacher nomination packet that Gaspard Lapari would be announced tonight as one of this year's honorees. In our role as the R and D arm for the Greenwich Public Schools, we often meet exceptional educators who are inspired to bring a new idea or concept to their classrooms and schools by writing a reaching-out grant. Gaspard brought virtual reality and augmented reality to Western Middle School. And over three years, and over the three years, and with grant funds of $115,000, he has taught students in special education, science, social studies, and more to explore the universe with this technology and software. For the second year, Gaspard will be hosting a VR STEAM, STEAM camp at Eastern Middle School, and you can sign up for that on our website. Another distinguished teacher, Carol Pugliano Martin, is an Alliance reaching-out grant recipient. Carol, in her grant, brought a full theater program to New Lebanon School. Every student at New Lev goes Every student at New Lev goes to a live theater performance and participates in various theater opportunities brought into the school. She has built a truly outstanding program that creates camaraderie amongst the staff and pride and confidence in the students. Parents are beaming when watching their children perform. Congratulations, Carol and Gaspary, and to all of this year's distinguished teachers. Tonight, I am announcing the party. On June 10th, I know I will be seeing all of you at Arch Street to celebrate 10 years of college dreams. We are hosting a community-wide party fundraiser because the Alliance and the Greenwich Public Schools in our combined support of Avid will soon have 10 years of Avid graduates. 2013 to 2023, and the huge efforts of our educators and the Avid students, alumni, and alumni deserve to be recognized. Kovak Brothers Band, composed of three Greenwich Public School teachers, will be playing, and there will be food trucks, a fun and casual night for all. Tickets will be on sale next week, and event sponsors are welcome right now. Sunday is Hope Day, and I will be at Arch Street with many community partners for the first annual event. The Alliance is pleased to have provided the funding for the students to take part in the Yellow Tulip Project workshops. Students who participated in this program were taught public speaking skills to be able to share their personal mental wellness stories to larger audiences. Come to Hope Day to listen to student stories and to enjoy the many activities of the day. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Emily Elizera. Sorry if I didn't pronounce that correctly. Next, Nadia Miss Court will be up next.
Good evening, members of the board and members and attendees. My name is Emily Elizer. I am Nadia's daughter, and I'm here to speak on my mother's behalf. Nadia is a very working, hard woman. She is a provider and a support not only for her household, for myself and my family, and for all of her loved ones. I aspire, I aspire to be half as hardworking as my mother has been. She has been a diligent and diligent bus driver for the past 23 years for this district alone. My mother, not too long ago, just shared with me that she would like to, that she has been so blessed to be working in this district and being a bus driver for so long that she would like to retire as a bus driver because of all of her hard work that she has put in for the past 23 years. And shortly, not too long ago, early this month, that was stripped away from her. We feel as though this decision was not a fair decision. It was an unjust decision, and we are here to ask the board to reconsider and to give a proper due process for my mother and for all bus drivers, because she is, it is not just her, but is all the bus drivers together that service this district. And so we are here tonight to ask for this reconsideration. Thank you.
Nadia Mycourt. Okay, all right. Gus Magrabi. Magrabi.
Chairman Kelly, board members, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Gus Magrabi. I am the chairman of the School Bus Paratransit Division. I represent about 3,000, more than 3,000 drivers, monitors, and mechanics in Westchester, in Queens, Brooklyn, and Greenwich. And tonight, I'm here to talk to you about my friend, my fellow driver, Nadia Mycourt. Nadia should be actually recognized today. 20 years with no accidents, no incidents. She should be recognized for the safety she had. But unfortunately, she was disqualified and on a decision of one person. When I was called to come and see what happened with Nadia, I came to the company, to First Student. I looked at the video, and I couldn't see anything that she did wrong. She did pass over the double yellow line. We all do this as bus drivers. If there is no incoming traffic, we tend to go to the middle of the lane to avoid anything, any hazards on the right. She didn't do anything wrong. I saw the video. I went to the district. I met the transportation director. I asked him if he saw the video. He said, no. I said, did anybody in the district see the video? He said, no. One person in the district says that she cannot drive, and that's it. Everybody took her word. That's disgraceful. That's shameful to pay somebody after, after 20 years of safe driving, taking care of your children, driving them back and forth, and you just in one second because of the arrogance of one person, you go and tell them you're done. It's not acceptable. We won't accept it. The drivers won't accept it. Another thing, we have a grievance process. She could have been disciplined by the company if she did anything wrong. All they had to do, pick up the phone, listen, I saw her driving dangerously, unsafe. They would call her in, look at the video, call the union. We go through a process. And you wouldn't believe how many times we wouldn't fight for unsafe drivers. Unfortunately, I was told by the transportation director, let her go to another district. If she is dangerous, why would I send her to another district? Children are important. So all I'm saying is, this is unfair. This process does not exist anywhere in this country. People have a right to face their accusers. They have a right to defend themselves, and this is not happening over here. This shouldn't be given to anybody. Too much power to give to anyone. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Mike Bocino. Hello, Mike.
Okay. My name is Mike Bocino. I am a former state representative, former PTAC, former PTA president, former, you know, everything. Thank you guys so much for everything you do. Right now, you guys are in a real quandary with a lot of the things that are going on with all of the schools, the facilities, everything that we have in front of us today and with this unfortunate situation. However, one of the major things that you need to focus on right now is the Western Middle School field remediation. I am telling you as a former state representative who was serving on the children's committee when I first went up to Hartford, that there is nothing, absolutely nothing wrong with turf fields. We actually need to have more turf fields. I am not advocating that every field in town of Greenwich get turfed. I am advocating that Western Middle School get turfed. Kids need to be able to be out there performing, practicing, and playing their individual sports. And the only way that they can do that in the Northeast to be competitive is if they have turf at their access, accessibility, because we have a lot of bad weather. We dropped the ball, I will tell you this, with the Greenwich Varsity Baseball Field. We should have turfed that. These poor kids don't have the opportunity to get out there and play as much as everyone else. One of the biggest things that we need to do and remember in all of this, and I'm trying to go as quickly as I can to get everything in, is that you need to make sure that the community is represented when you're making these decisions. The Byram Community, the West End Community is in 110% support of putting in AstroTurf, putting in the turf fields. We're also in huge support of lighting it up, making sure that these kids have all of the things that they need to increase their saliability when they get into colleges, so that they can be better off as their athletic programs. We also have disservice that Western side of the town by not having those fields available to them. We've finally gotten the state of Connecticut to come forward with a wonderful plan that will open these fields up for all of these kids in order for them to get out there and practice and enjoy physical activity. It's the duty of you to not be short-sighted right now and understand that this is a moment in time where we have an opportunity to create a state-of-the-art sports complex
Thirty seconds.
for the town of Greenwich. I serve on parks and recreation, and we're also short with our field inventories. This will raise the field inventory. I implore you to allow someone from the community to be associated with this, with this program so that we can make certain that everything is done properly. We don't, we're not short-sighted. We're not just worried about the funding. We want to make sure that this is the best possible out, end of the day discussion and, and end of the day product that we possibly can give to the town of Greenwich.
Time.
The first time we have this opportunity. Don't waste it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Talking about.
We love Calipuliano and Aaron John.
All right. And Mike, talking about grass on 420. Thank you. Tony, Dr. Jones, the superintendent's report.
Thank you. I'm going to be rather brief since it's already 8:30 tonight. And we celebrated so much about what's happening in the school, so I think we have a really good picture of what's, what's happened over the last few months. I do want to just mention, one of the requests from PTA, our PTAC, was to do a safety and security update, just in general, you know, when we get threats, when, when do we go into lockdown, things of that nature. And there's quite a lengthy document that will go out tomorrow to the community. So I just encourage people to, if you need to read it over a couple of, a couple of readings, because it is quite long, but there's a lot of information. Our high school GHS students also did an interview with Chief Heavy, which is very informative, so that will be coming out tomorrow. Earlier this week, we did get our special education interim and our Havemeyer flood, which was fantastic. So thank you to BET and RTM for approving those. That's going to help us a lot as we work for our financial, you know, preparing for the end of the year. And then last but not least, I'll just mention, there's only 40 days of school left. And when we were talking about that today, I thought, oh my goodness, only 40 days. It's going quick. So again, lots of great work going on, and I think you're going to enjoy some of these agenda items tonight that are so informative and reflective of the great work that is happening out in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Hi, Tony. We just heard, everybody left, but I don't, we just heard a number of comments from the, the drivers' union. I guess, could you mind updating the public about, you know, kind of what happened this week? And just, just a sense of where, 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 where that situation is. I think we need to clarify on, on the state, on what happened or the narrative here.
Generally, we don't respond when we have comments from the public like this. It's not an agenda item tonight. What I will say is that we followed the contract that we have with First Student. It's not our union and it's not our employee. And I, we don't ever take situations like this lightly. And I do just want to make sure, because I know sometimes there are misunderstandings. My understanding to date, but again, it's not our employee, is that the employee is, was offered actually still to drive for the company that, you know, if she's planning on retirement, that this was not impacting that, but that would need to come from First Student, not from us. But this is a normal process that we do go through. You know, and, and unfortunately, it is challenging, but if somebody is, is noted as driving unsafe, this is a situation sometimes that we, we take.
Any more questions? Okay, let's move on to the reports of officers committees and liaisons. Anybody have anything to say? Christina, do you want to go over Havemeyer or Shurash?
Well, I guess it's a very brief, that the committee has been meeting and has, in the process of hiring an engineer to do an evaluation of the current state of the building. So that process is, there is someone who's on retainer to the town, who's going to undertake that and then report back to the committee. I think that's sufficient, don't you think, Joe?
Absolutely. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Laura.
So I would like to give a report on the CMS Building Committee. Our chair-appointed EdSpec Working Group has met twice. We will be meeting again tomorrow morning to work to reconcile our space adjustments as a result of the building committee's recommendations and the verified program from the architects. Once our working group is able to give direction on those EdSpecs and, and some reconciliation to the Board of Education, the board will hopefully have a special meeting and will be able to move quickly and vote on any proposed changes. With, with those adjustments sorted, the Build, Building Committee will be able to get a conceptual design estimate in a few weeks that we can hopefully present to the BET.
Thank you. And we're going to go back to Central Middle School in a little bit. We just want to go over everyone's liaison committees. Anybody else, anything to update us on? Oh, there you are. Michael.
So the Strategic Plan Committee did not meet, but we did have a few meetings in regards to our proposal to host a research, the Research Ed Conference last, next year. Board members, remember that we talked, I talked last meeting and the meeting before about the possibility to hold really an international conference here in Greenwich and bringing speakers from across the, across the, across the, across the world, really. Certainly from Europe and, and across the United States here, published authors to show, to, to speak and talk about how research meets practice. Last, two weeks ago, Dr. Jones, Dr. Carrillo, and Mr. Amico and I met with the, some of the leaders of Research Ed, so they, they're directly from them, not just me. Research Ed is a nonprofit organization. They, they don't make any money off of this. Their, their job is to spread the word. Their mission is to spread, the, the, spread research, right, and spread the mission of research. We, I further than had a conversation with the Chair of Research Ed from Scotland last week. They are very excited about it. The, the next step is hope to bring to the board an actual proposal that hopefully we might be able to discuss and vote upon at our next meeting. Targeting, the, the possible target date would be for this conference, which would be a one-day conference on Saturday, would be May the 4th, which is Star Wars Day. That's not correct. So that might conflict with some, but otherwise it would be May the 4th of 2024. So that would be an agenda item for, for, for next month.
Thank you. Christina.
I have a question for Mike. Just in terms of this conference, I know you and I had a conversation about it. How would it get paid for? All the elements of it. I know we talked about it a little bit, but that was a while ago. So if we're going to be talking about a vote on that, I think that would be helpful information, obviously.
Absolutely. All of that would go into the information we bring to the board next month. The, it's self-funded. The, from registration fees, obviously, we're not going to put any money from the school district budget into, into Research Ed. It's not how it would go. But Dr. Jones can talk a little bit about that too, because I know we, we put in an Alliance grant.
Excellent. Anymore? If not, I have one or a couple. JC, the elevator, we've isolated or we're making final decisions on where we're going to put the elevator in JC. We're having the architect draw up how it's going to be put in. And we're moving forward with, with the building committee with JC. We're also looking at the security entrance. We're an ADA accessible entrance in the front. We have some nice designs that the architect is going over. It's really cool. Waterfall Project, they continuing to meet. We understand they wanted to lay that a little bit, because it could be some work done in front of the school. So we're, we're just looking at designs and, and just talking about it. And the final, I was hoping to have a final report on the stadium. We haven't had a report on the stadium for a while. We are one thing away from being absolutely finished with the stadium where we get a certificate of occupancy. We have $70,000 worth of trees we have to plant. We don't have $70,000 for trees. So the only thing stopping us from getting a certificate of occupancy, the final one for the stadium, is $70,000 worth of trees. We've got to figure out either where to find the trees, where to find the $70,000. The, oh, that's it. That's a very good question, because the tree warden, who derives his power from both the state and local, he's decided that we, in the plan, in the initial plan, he wanted certain trees put in certain places. And it came down to the end where we looking for the money for the trees, and we're trying to figure out where that would come from. And we will find out eventually how and when. And once the tree warden is the last person to sign off on our certificate, certificate of occupancy. And once the tree warden is the last person to sign off on our certificate, certificate of occupancy, then we then have a C of O. Yes, Christina?
In order to get the money for the trees. I know we had requested in our budget um and the BET didn't put it in, but maybe at some point we should be considering an interim then, if we really want to get a C of O for the stadium, which would seem like the prudent and appropriate thing to do. I I'm just throwing it out as a not an imminent, but a food for thought, because if we need the trees, we need the trees.
Great minds think alike and fools seldom differ. So uh uh definitely, I uh I agree with you. Michael?
Old, old Greenwich Building Committee, uh two minute, two, two-sentence report. They uh the MI uh application went through, was Board of Selectmen last week, and now that's at P and Z. Um and we are in the final stages of hiring a construction manager, which should be finalized tomorrow.
Thank you. Is that it for our committees, liaisons, and uh? Oh, good. Okay, now it's time for discussion items. We're gonna go right back to CMS. So Laura, can I pass my uh magical chair powers over to you to run this discussion?
I would be most pleased.
Thank you.
Uh any questions for me? Since I just gave my report? Yes, Ms. Kowalski.
So we had a few speakers, and I know we've received a few emails regarding public comment and people's avail access to information. I think it would be helpful to um give a better understanding of the narrative regarding um public access to comment as well as information. If you could shed some more information on that, I think that would be helpful to setting the record straight.
So typically, building committee meetings are not public hearings. It's for us to conduct our business. Our design review committee meetings similarly, similarly are a way for us to conduct our business. We've um hosted a community forum here on the project. And during the EdSpec process, we held um sessions for the community to give us feedback on what they hoped to see in a new building. Say that again.
I believe that was nine sessions.
Uh we, we had a lot of um, we had a lot of opportunity for feedback. Um we appreciate feedback. Um we do have a school to build. We are placing it on the field for multiple reasons. Um all safety related. We have to be cognizant of ways to take cars off the road for our student's safety and the safety of the community. Our parent and bus loop um site plan, while not final um was created with that in mind specifically. Siting on the field was also um a way for us to improve sightlines for safety post Sandy Hook. So those were the considerations for placing the building where it is.
I also believe that the EdSpec that was approved on August eleventh of twenty twenty-two also specified that the building would be built on the field behind the current building. Is that correct?
In our facility master plan, which the site plan, you know, was just, I think, a suggestion. It too had the new central middle school building on the field. And that was developed circa twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen.
The other question that I'd ask some clarification on is in regards to this um suggestion that we're building a three-story building? And can you give some greater greater clarity as to the number of stories in which this building may be?
I myself have been very direct with the architect that I thought a two-story building would be very, uh I'm sorry, a three-story building would be very problematic. Um we don't want to be bad neighbors. I think a two-story building in a residential zone is far um is a far easier sell. Um we're hoping that now that we've given the architect that feedback, that they will take it to heart. Um we've said it in our interview that we believe a three-story building would be suboptimal. And um the building that was presented when we asked, is that a three-story building? They said it's a three-story building, but it may be a two and a half story. But anyway, so um we're in the design process right now. Um we voted in the Design Review Committee to limit the height of the building to one that would not require the building committee to get a special variance for the height. So we're trying to limit the height of the building.
And doesn't the plans, once the architect has submitted the plans, need to come back to the board for approval?
We do. Our board must approve the design. Yes, Ms. Hirsch.
So along the same vein, I I know that um we've had this in the past with other building committees and other buildings. Um you know, the architects will come to you guys with presentations of of some, some ideas of what the building could look like. Uh and uh oftentimes, those are just something that the the architects have imagined, not something we've actually asked for or the building committees have asked for. Um so I don't know if you want to kind of clarify that that, you know, what may have been presented is not from what you're saying, what we, what has been asked for. They're just pie in the sky designs that are shared, and that's where we narrow down. So is that correct?
The design process is a process. Um we have not settled on an aesthetic, a design, a height. Uh you know, we're trying to limit the height of the building, um considering that this is a residential zone. Um and so we don't have a final design. This is one of the ideas presented by the architect. I think they have heard our feedback loud and clear on the building um rendering that they presented.
Thank you, because I know when we first discussed EdSpecs, we all had said we did not want a three-story uh facility here.
Correct.
So thank you for clarifying.
Yes, Mr. Mercantian, a doctor, doctor.
Thank you. Discuss it. Um so that we know there's a, there's a lot of uh different conversations and discussion around the community and there are different numbers bandied about around capacity, enrollment, size, and building too big and things like that. And one of the things that we did since our last meetings, you know, is we uh put together um a PowerPoint um that's in the board packet, board documents tonight, to try to clarify um some of the board's decision. The um I don't think it's appropriate. We don't have to talk through at length at the PowerPoint. But with your permission, the um I do think it would be appropriate to spend uh three or four minutes just going, going over some of the big things, because I think that clarity would be be helpful.
Would you like to geek out about the two-team model for a little bit?
I really would.
Okay.
Is it, is it possible uh for Michael to put it up on the, on the screen?
I mean, I suppose anything is possible.
Just give me one minute to call it up.
There we go. I knew it was, I knew it was, it was up there somewhere.
While he's doing that, Mike, can I just jump in for a question? Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
Uh prior to uh passing over the temporary chair powers to you, when I was chair, I put together a uh subcommittee to have discussions on possibly altering the EdSpecs based on new information we we received. How how is that going?
So uh we have met twice. I think in my report, I said, uh we're gonna meet again uh tomorrow morning. Uh we've worked late into the night, the last two nights. Um and uh I can see my colleagues looking quite tired. So uh we continue to work through adjustments on spaces and hope to have a um email to you, Chair Kelly, uh after our, our meeting tomorrow.
Thank you.
It'll probably come up again in the agenda planning.
Okay, I'm sorry, sorry, to put the wrong direction. Um this, because I was, that was gonna be my follow-up, was something next steps, right? Kind of, how do you envision the process moving along? I know we're gonna talk about Michael's PowerPoint. Does it? I I maybe not in this level. So no, no, just kind of your general game plan, because I know we want to keep the project on track. We've, we want to allow the architect and the building committee to continue doing their work. So what would be your sugge, I will go to Mike's PowerPoint, but what would be your suggestions?
So my suggestion with um approval from our chair uh would be to hold a special meeting ideally on Monday. Anybody available? Um but again, with his approval, if he is a minimal. And then um we would be able to, hopefully theoretically, after a weekend of reviewing our changes, be able to present those to the board on Monday, get a vote, and then send them to the building committee so that they can continue their work and give direction to the architect on the size of the building.
I was gonna say, I know, I know it's a long PowerPoint, and then Mike spent a lot of time, Dr. McCanty, Anthony, spent a lot of time on it. So I I would love to give it its due. Um so I don't know if you want to, if you're available, if you're able to just do a a quick, and then if we're, if we have a uh an meeting on Monday, then if you want to
Let the man go.
I don't think we need the whole background.
We're gonna, we're gonna, I mean, this is the, the executive summary, the uh, but I hear you. Thank you, thank you. They um um the purpose here was twofold. The one was, was to, from a board perspective, from the, for the board to uh at all of us to to explain our position here as far as what we see and what we envision as the most important aspects of um of central middle school and clarify that for the community, since there is so much debate and discussion about that. Um and then the second, the second aspect of this, this PowerPoint is really to help set the parameters and the guide for just that, that subcommittee work that we're going to be talking about at the special meeting. Um really such that we have the priorities clear when we're looking at revising the EdSpecs. So the, the next slide here, which is something we will not go into detail, uh lays out some of the history of the project back from the facilities master plan through the EdSpecs originally being uh derived, uh voted on in August. Um and then the architectural dispute that we spent a lot of time discussing last month. Um the next slide um shows uh a comparison of kind of of what the different plans um where the different plans are. So on the left-hand side, obviously, you see the current central middle school, the building we're currently in. That was a hundred and ten thousand square feet, thirty-one classrooms, six science labs. This is obviously available on board docs and is as public for for all to see. The EdSpecs as approved, uh the EdSpecs as approved last August by the board um increased to a hundred and fifteen, thirty classrooms, six science labs, and the full auditorium. Um the decisions that we're currently for uh looking at stem largely from the revisions that the Central Middle School Building Committee made uh last month. Um they are recommending changes to the EdSpecs, uh increasing to a hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet, thirty classrooms, six science labs, um effectively halving the uh and effectively halving the size of this space, the auditorium. Um much has the discussion around the EdSpecs, if we can go to the next point, next slide here, is around capacity. And you see the sig in the six hundred and sixty student number has been discussed at length across town. So we thought um uh our working group, we thought it makes sense to take a couple minutes to define what we mean by capacity. Um so in simplest terms, uh because middle school capacity is different than an elementary school capacity, and it's important for um all of us in the community to realize that. In simplest terms, if this was an elementary school, it's a very simple calculation. Now, there are other complicated calculations, and if you look at square footage and things like that in facilities master plan, but for our purposes, you know, you take the number of classrooms, you times out by the number of students, and you get a capacity. An elementary school classroom, that would make a lot of sense. Um it doesn't, as you see on the next slide, make uh make, make, make that sense in the middle school. And the middle school, because middle schools are not programmed by individual classrooms, but are programmed by teams, they uh that is a range, that number is a range, and it could be up to six hundred and sixty students. They uh but uh but often less likes, and there are some parameters on that, which we talk about um and try to explain on the next few slides. So the most important aspect of the EdSpec, uh from my opinion, and the reason why we have to be so careful about the EdSpecs is the preserve, preservation of the team model. Um what is a team? So the teams, obviously, the team in a middle school, um everyone on a sixth grade um has the same team, that has the same, if 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 you're a teacher, if, excuse me, if you're a student in sixth grade, um you're a student of the cohort of up to a hundred and ten students, and you all share the same stu, the same teachers, such that the math teacher, the ELA teacher, most language arts, social studies and science um all share the same similar cadre of students. That's extraordinarily important in middle school, which for reasons uh spelled out in detail um on the next slide. Um what uh everybody who has taught or everybody who has, if we can go to the next slide real quick. They um every, for anyone who has taught, or certainly anyone who has raised a middle school or knows, uh middle school is a very complicated age range. And shrinking the school down, shrinking down the, the number of adults and making those, those relationships meaningful between who the student uh works with is incredibly important. And that's why we have a team model. It is why, in the middle of the last century, as a country, we moved away from junior highs and moved to middle schools. Middle schools are just that. The difference between a junior high and a middle school is very much, is very much in the team model. Michael, I don't know if you can go to the next slide. Um there, there we go. Thank you. The uh middle schools are very much synonymous with uh team structures. Um and you'll see there are links to um a lot of the research and the summary of research of the middle school movement in the twentieth century that brought the team to that. Before that, a junior high was just that. It was a junior version of high school. And we realized a long time ago that moving students uh treating a seventh grader like an eleventh grader, where they go all around the building from class to class to class, doesn't work very well. That's why we try to shrink it down. Um much more recently, the Middle Level Educate, the Association for Middle Level Education released a summary now in its fifth edition, saying teaming is the heart of a middle school philosophy. They um even as early as latest twenty eighteen, Hanover Research commissioned a a report for Connecticut, saying that teaming is, uh champion is the most efficient way to organize middle education. Um it's the gold standard for middle schools. It's why it's so important, the EdSpecs. Building a, building a new central middle school that can't support the team model would be uh as effective as building an eighty-yard football field. It is simply not worth it. They um and that's why the team model is is so important. Um however, huh yes, and that means, and that means looking, and that means considering the spaces a different way, in different ways. Um so how is a team model? And this is a complicated slide that people can study at their leisure. But you see here, this is kind of how middle school is, a simple way of how a middle school is programmed. Um so period one, you see the different classes. In our model, remember, there were two English Language Arts classes. So the shaded version is, the shaded version of that is where the kids are, and the white square is empty. That's important for reasons that we'll talk about at our special meetings, why we might be able to shrink the square footage a little bit, because that, not every classroom is used every period in the team model. The um um there are five classrooms used at any one time, give or take. Now, there are some others, because classes break out and there's tracking and things like that. But in general, there is uh, there are some, there are some, there is a little bit of space. But basically, in order to have a team, you need those classrooms. Uh one team of a hundred, which could, could fit under our contractual per uh uh limits, up to a hundred and ten students. Um that on the next slide gives a sense of what the capacity means. So at that six hundred and sixty uh number, uh mythical enrollment number of someday, sometime in the future, um this, the, we could fit a hundred and ten students per team. They um, that's a class of size of twenty-two. They um, you need uh those many classrooms on the team in order to, class, class, physical classrooms um to have a twenty-two class size. Now, there's been a lot of cocking and community about declining enrollment. The state number, projected number in the next eight years is five hundred and eleven. That would be a class size on a team of seventeen. They um at one point in the future, there's a projection of us going as low as four hundred and fifty students at Central Middle School. That would mean class sizes under the two-team-per-grade model, which is what we have, of fifteen per student, of uh of fifteen. Obviously, it doesn't work out that way. It is going to be uneven numbers and things like that. Um obviously, fifteen is small, so that says, well, can we have efficiencies here? Or can we shrink that? Can we go to one team or something like that? The answer is no, we can't. And this is the problem that we face here with designing central middle school. You see that on the next slide, because if You see that on the next slide. Because if we go to a one-team model, the numbers simply get too big. The, if you only have one team on sixth grade, one team on seventh grade and one team on eighth grade. Obviously, at six hundred and sixty, you're looking at classes of forty-four. But at four hundred and fifty students, that low number, we're still looking at a class size of thirty. Which obviously is untenable. It's not acceptable to the community. It's too large for a class size guidelines. And it's outside of teacher contractual limits. Why talk about all this? Because I think it's important for us to realize what we, when we talk about the range here. The, building a school around teams, and you'll see that on the next slide, building the middle school, uh, building the middle school around teams. Mandates a certain number of classes. They, it is essential for high performing middle school. However, the new, the, that's, that's the number one thing. If you look at all the research, there was no one out there who will argue that you can have a middle school without teams. It's not worth it. But number two here, the, the new CMS, the other conclusion here is we have to have a two-team structure. The, if you, unless you're going to three hundred and thirty students in the middle school and no projection is that, we need to have two teams. And that requires a certain number of classrooms, probably at least twenty-eight. We're going to talk about that on Monday. The, and then the third conclusion here, the two-team-per-grade structure requires building enough classrooms for a range of students up to six sixty. Bottom line, which is the final, the final point here on the next slide. Thank you, Mike. So on the, the next slide. Suspense, oh, one more. There we go. Thank you. So the bottom line, the, the team model is extraordinarily efficient from an educational perspective. It is inefficient on a square footage basis. That's the trade-off that we as a board are, are, are believing in. There, that we believe strongly that that trade-off is worth it. We're going to need more classrooms to make the team model work. And that might require some finishes, inefficiencies. And our job, the job of the working group and the job that we're going to be talking about at the special meeting is where we might be able to find. Other places in the building outside of classrooms to maintain the team model, but find other efficiencies. To control the ultimate square footage of the building and make it, make it, make it cost effective.
Thank you. Any other questions?
And I should note, this, this was vetted by, I didn't make all this up, but Dr. Jones, Principal Healy. And many several members aboard, Christine, Christina, all gave comments on this. This was, this is not just a, a McCanty Anthony production.
Thank you. Yes, Karen.
I was just gonna say, thank you. This is why you're such a great educator. No, no, it's true. Thank you for, you know, for your great presentation.
Ms. Downey.
First names. So back to next steps. If, I guess the question is, if we, if we are gonna have a meeting next week. I don't know if this goes back into Joe's gavel, or I guess when we do agenda planning. We would have to, if we were doing a meeting, we really have to think about it tonight. We can't like kind of wait and do emails just because of the notice requirements. Just food for thought.
Is it back to me now?
Please take it away.
Thank you. We have some great progress on Western Middle School. If we can briefly, Dr. Jones, go over what we've accomplished, the good news.
Uh, we were at planning and zoning this week and AECOM and Langen are moving, you know, full steam ahead. Probably what you heard in the public comment tonight is, did come out of planning and zoning and. That's where they were asking a lot of questions about turf versus grass, a natural grass. But again, that plan has been vetted with deep and EPA. The board has voted on it. It does have a turf cap. And so, I mean, that's what we're moving forward with the, what we plan to do there. So. We're excited where we are and, and they've been very, very responsive at the state in working with AECOM and Langen.
Great. Any questions, Western? We're cooking with gasoline, our Western, go ahead.
When do we expect to get the final yay from the state so that we can break some ground? Well, I mean, we assume I have to ask for interim funding, but.
The way, well, my understanding in the way that it works, we really have that to be where we are now. It's not like there's like a magic form they just sign. They know exactly where we are in the process. They were here for our public hearing. You know, it's all of those steps. They know we're at planning and zoning right now. They did because they're still working with the team. They actually came back and in a couple of areas, we didn't have to go as deep. And so they were resubmitting some of those plans and updating them over the last few weeks, but, and they hope to have. The, the questions to the answers for planning and zoning very quickly. And I think there is a pre-meeting that'll be happening just within the next, like, next week.
Thank you. Anybody else? Great. And our board colleagues, I'm gonna try to move along quickly because we have a lot on our agenda, so please yell at me if I move too fast. My friend Mark D'Amico, come up, please. Well, it's good to talk about the K-5 ELA and reading waiver.
Good evening, Chairman Kelly, members of the board, Dr. Jones, all of those listening in and here in person. My name is Mark D'Amico. I'm the Director of Curriculum and Leadership for kindergarten through eighth grade. With me tonight is our K-8 ELA Coordinator, Kimberly Palladino. Who will give to you for the very first time her lead presentation on three important items. In the world of English Language Arts. First, we'll talk about our adoption of a new universal screener. We'll give you an update on our state waiver that's been submitted. And then we're going to take you through our path forward for early literacy instruction. I know there have been some board members that have submitted some questions. We did provide you with some detailed written responses. But we very much look forward to a rigorous and thorough conversation on this topic at any time we can begin.
So you ready for questions now?
Absolutely.
Okay, who's got a question? Laura?
Could you explain for some of the. Members and parents who may not be aware, what is a G O D?
I'm glad you asked. It's really a fun and exciting new thing that we have in our classrooms. And every time I get to see them in action, I get really excited. So G O Ds are our set of decodable texts. That are in our K-two classrooms. A decodable text is, we call an accountable text. It's a text that matches the phonics. Scope and sequence that the kids are learning in the classrooms. So we adopted G O Ds in twenty twenty-one. Kind of got a little bit interrupted with COVID, but now they're in all of our classrooms. We also have the black and white copies that are. So every kid has them and can take them home. But basically. The students are learning, for example, in first grade, maybe they're learning about consonant blends, which are two letters that make two sounds. So B L, S R. S L, T R, that kind of a thing. And then the book that they're reading has those patterns in it. So they're practicing in connected text. The other cool thing about G O Ds is it is a knowledge building. Portion where they have curated text sets, about four texts for each set. So in that first grade example, we're talking about consonant blends. They have four books about creature features, about animals and how they protect themselves. So there's four different books. So constantly they're building knowledge about the same topic. They're having recurring vocabulary that keep coming up. And they're practicing their fluency throughout it all. So they're really exciting. The books themselves are really, the kids love them. The teachers are like, they just want to like touch them. They're very nice quality books and the kids are very engaged in them.
Mike?
Thank, thank, thank you. The, I, I really did appreciate the, the presentation and the softness and thanks for the questions today. And all that. Obviously, this is an incredibly important topic. The, I would argue it's one of the. Most important curriculum decisions we, we have. Could you, would you mind walking us through? Because we heard from the, the G E A president tonight, we heard some comments about the Right to Leave Act and things like that. Some concerns there. I guess, I guess, could you walk us through some of the decisions that you made in submitting the waiver? And the, some of the, some of the things like G O Ds that, that decided to put in and why, why apply for the waiver instead of. Like I said, some of the, the state-approved curriculum choices.
Sure. So I think it's important to kind of give context. In twenty twenty-one, they passed the Right to Read Act, which is what was, Lil was referencing earlier. After that legislation passed, it kind of acted, curated a, a set of events that came into play. One was creating a, a reading leadership council under the guise of a director and with, with the director. And also the, the council, they were charged with looking at and reviewing up to five reading programs. That would be presented to districts and districts would have to choose from one of those five, at least five programs to be implemented. The idea was that they wanted districts to have robust and rigorous curriculums that. Talked about the five pillars of reading, which you saw all over that presentation. So the state is looking for curriculums that have. Robust instruction and phonemic awareness, phonics, vocabulary, fluency and comprehension. And part of that process, when the, when the, we finally got the list in October, this past October. There was also a waiver option that became available for districts that felt like the curriculum they currently have in place. Met the state requirements of having those five pillars of reading in a scientifically researched-based and evidence-based programs. So when we started reviewing our own curriculum, we realized very quickly that we have really good, strong, robust. Components for each of those five pillars. There were some areas in need of refinement, which were some of the additions that you saw for the upcoming school year. On the presentation. But ultimately, we chose the waiver because we believe in what we've been doing. Our teachers have invested their time and energy into what we've been doing and to, to throw all that out to pick a box curriculum. That would mean that we'd have to realign everything. We probably couldn't use foundations anymore, which we've just spent four years enrolling out. Our teachers are finding huge success with it. Our kids are decoding like you've never seen before. And. To, to kind of take G O Ds out that we've been implementing for two years. It didn't make sense. So. Once we started putting those together and putting in little refinements that you saw in the presentation, it made more sense. And I think. You know, I know Dr. Jones and, and, and Mr. D'Amico have been talking to administrators around the state and. I, I, we're, sorry, we're, we're, we're still not the, we're, we're definitely not the only ones that have done this. So I'll let them speak a little bit more to that, but.
Yeah, there's also some backend concerns on the programs that were recommended by the state. And certainly Dr. Jones can talk about her conversations within the superintendent's cadre across the state. And I can talk a little bit about what the assistant superintendents were concerned with early on, which was. That we, we requested from the state, many of the assistant superintendents. Data that supported those programs and could show us the evidence that it would improve our student outcomes. More so than our current programs, that evidence wasn't provided to us. In fact, the five programs that were originally listed were in very few Connecticut school districts. Which was another concern for us. An initial review of the programs, what we found were several, several of the programs were very similar in nature. And that's because of the publication companies that were supporting them. And also that the approach that they were taking wasn't necessarily aligned with the mission and vision of the Greenwich Public Schools. Again, we believe in a multi-tiered, programmatic, theme-based approach to early literacy. Where the five pillars of reading are clearly defined and represented. But I also want to go back to what Ms. Palladino said in which we want to honor the hard work and commitment of the. Public school teachers that have gone through years of professional development. And that this town has invested a great deal of funds in, in order to bring foundations into our primary classrooms. And we have seen a great deal of success. So when you think about the science of reading, and I know that's the term that's floating out there in the community. It talks about the five pillars of reading. So the presentation that we created for you. Was to thoroughly and explicitly outline how our prescribed curriculum as it currently stands. And how it will evolve as we implement some small changes in the fall, absolutely adhere to those five pillars. And we have every bit of confidence that our waiver will be approved. And we look forward to receiving that feedback from the state. Dr. Jones, I don't know if you wanted to add anything just from the superintendent perspective on that.
You know, when I meet with the superintendents from Fairfield County, we were all very much aligned in that. You know, these are some of the most progressive school districts doing great work, invested not only a ton of money, but just as Marcus said, the time. That our teachers have put in to, to utilize what we have right now. We would be throwing all of that out. Plus, it would be well over a million dollars. You actually, they went and actually calculated what those programs would cost. And it just didn't make sense. And I will say, one of the questions, I think Karen, you asked this today. You know, they thought they were going to get about forty waivers from across the state and they ended up getting somewhere between a hundred and ten and a hundred and twenty. As, as people went in and started evaluating. So we have many districts taking the same approach that we are.
Well, first of all, I'm always skeptical of a program that comes down from the state that they're forced to use. I've said it many times. And I am affirmatively against programs that are come down from the state that we have. They come in little cookie cutter boxes because they don't fit our unique dynamic here in Greenwich. However, one of my esteemed colleagues on the board, who's more schooled in this than I am, has. We've talked a little bit about in the last week, this concept of units of study. And over the last twenty years or so, there had been quite a few challenges to that program as, and I understand that. The creator of this program has now made changes and refinements. And I'd like your understanding of whether or not those changes and refinements are sufficient. Do you think they meet our needs? And do you share the concerns of my esteemed colleague that will remain nameless regarding the units of study portion of this curriculum?
I'm happy to talk with, about that. I think, I think we've seen a lot in the news. I think we've seen a lot in the newspapers and podcasts surrounding this. I think the first thing that's important to note about the units of study is that it was never designed to be. What the state was looking to review. It was never meant to be an all-encompassing curriculum, right? And that's why when you saw our slideshow, it isn't, it isn't. There are primary resource for phonemic awareness or for phonics or even for vocabulary. It's our primary resource for comprehension. It does support. The other ones and the new units, to your point, really do take that, the criticism that they've gotten in the past. The new units do have an optional phonemic awareness thing, but we're going to go with a more systematic explicit part of that. It does integrate font, the application of the phonics within every lesson. The amount of decode, there's been a shift in, in the early grades and K and one specifically. With putting decodable text within the model text within the small group instruction and goes in their book box. So kids are getting now a balanced. Plethora of books. They're getting some authentic texts and they're getting some decodable texts in addition to the G O Ds that they're already using in small group daily. In addition to the knowledge, I know we were talking about knowledge generation and we were talking about how G O Ds are so great for that. They've also built that within the mini lessons. So there's a lot of nonfiction text being read aloud. There's. There are directions and how to curate nonfiction text sets during the nonfiction unit so that kids are building their knowledge upon that. And I think the biggest criticism that we read about and we saw and we heard about is this idea of the three cueing system. So the three cueing system for, for everyone that's. Around today is the idea that when we're teaching our earliest readers to read, like in kindergarten and in first grade. When they get to a word they don't know, we're supposed to provide them some strategies of how to solve that word. So. In the three cueing system, we're using lots of different ways to get to the word. So you might get to a word and you might say, okay, like. You don't know that word? Okay, check the picture. Look at the first letter. What do you think might go there? And I think over the years of research and working with scientists and the, the science of reading and, and knowing what we know about phonetic decoding. We, we know that that's not the best strategy. It might get them reading faster in kindergarten. But then it helps them to create a roadblock when they get a little bit older. So what, that's been completely removed. From all of the units and you won't see that at all. And also, if you noticed on the slideshow, that is one of the shifts that we're making instructionally. Is reinforcing the concept that we're not using the three cueing system for decoding anymore. It was always meant to be a strategy to understand what you're reading. So when you read something and it doesn't make sense, you can like check yourself and go back and reread, but it kind of got. A little bit confused in curricular material. So that is all out and we're building up the resources to make that possible. So we're, we're adding more decodable texts into all of our K-two classrooms in addition to the G O Ds to support that, in addition to what's already in the units.
So just two follow-ups on that. So one, with certain changes, are we comfortable that our current budget is sufficient for any of the changes that we have as opposed to a million dollars that we would need in order to fund a new program?
Yeah.
Well, I wanted to go back and, and I wanted to answer your question just directly about the concerns of your esteemed colleague. I do not share those concerns. We feel very confident
I heard.
That the revised units of study fit in our multi-layered approach to early literacy instruction. And we are already in, in the planning phases of what our professional learning day will look like for teachers on June 20th, to provide them not only with the materials, should they choose to take them home for the summer, but we are providing them with instructional planning maps and an overview of the first unit that will certainly allow the transition to the revised units to be a much more easier process than in the past.
So we've, we've run out, I mean, we've implemented a lot of new programs. And one of the things that we've heard, or I've heard from teachers is, you know, it's a lot of work to start a brand new program. And so what I'm also hearing from you, and I just want confirmation, is that essentially this program in, in, in its whole is pretty much already is implemented here, except for the tweaks that we need, a couple of tweaks that we need to make. Is that a fair statement?
Fair statement. It's a similar statement that I actually made to, to Ms. Perron and one of the members of her executive committee yesterday, when they had an impromptu meeting with myself and Ms. Palladino about the changes that were coming in the fall. And look, I'll be honest with you. Is it a lot for a teacher? Anytime we ask teachers to adopt new curriculum, we have to be sensitive to the transition process. And that falls on my team to make sure that the professional development is clear, is consistent, and that teachers have an opportunity to provide feedback so that we know what follow-up sessions need to look like. I feel really good about where we are and I'm going to tell you why. Many of the components are just refinements. Many of the components we've had in place. The alternative was to start from ground zero. And that would have been very, very difficult, given the limited amount of professional learning opportunities we do have with teachers before the beginning of the school year. So I think that answers your question.
It does. It, one last piece, the units of study component of this, was that in any of the other state, those five programs the state was pushing out?
No.
Then I'm good to go.
Madam Secretary.
As usual, I had a ton of questions, most of which I sent ahead of time. And I really greatly appreciate the document that you provided with responses. It might be in the best interest of time, if you're okay with having that posted.
Absolutely.
So I have, so I, I think two of my esteemed colleagues have already asked a bunch of the units of studies questions. So I'm going to slide over to the new screener instead. Before I ask that, the one question I did want to ask about geodes and some of the other programs. I know we used a lot of, as you, as you speak today in this presentation. And so I know I've been asked by several parents, is there, if we are going to be able to provide a more parent-friendly version of some of these documents and some examples and demonstrations of how these are going to be used in the classroom, so that we can have our parents better support our students' learning at home. And I just want to see if you could address that quickly before I ask Deebles questions.
Absolutely. I've been in contact with PTEC this week and we have a tentative schedule for a, a board-friendly, a parent-friendly board presentation about just kind of the shifts and, and the five pillars and what the state is asking about. So we're currently trying to schedule that for, for a May virtual meeting for that. And then I think it made, we, we talked through how it may, it makes more sense to wait until the fall, when these new materials are being implemented, to have an in-person parent workshop, to, to see them in person and to, to do some activities and to, to really engage with parents to see how they can support their students at home with all of the, the new little exciting pieces that we have in mind. So yes, stay tuned, parents. You will see the invitation on PTEC fairly soon.
I think that's great. I think our teachers also need to get their, their fingers in and dirty into this program before we start to put together how the parents can help at home. We want to make sure our teachers give you guys their feedback. So I wanted to slide over to Deebles, which is the new screening program that we're going to be moving in instead of STAR. So I, I know that I'd asked if other districts were using this as a screener and that this week's going to be, which you addressed already. So I was just wondering if you could talk about how this is, why we picked Deebles. And as it's replacing STAR, if you feel it's going to be better supportive of our students and better able to catch students early with reading and learning differences so that we can better support them at younger grade levels to, to better, you know, to better adapt and learn.
Absolutely. I am incredibly excited about our adoption of Dibbles. It is, that's okay. That's why we're here to, to give all the information. So just a short historical of that is that we, again, were given a list from the state of, of screeners that we were allowed to choose from. We, this has, this started back in 2014 and that's when we adopted STAR. They updated the list of approved screeners this past June. So we went to our due diligence. We had meetings with all of the companies. We got together a representative committee of teachers and administrators to look through what we were, what, what our options were. And by far, this was the unanimous decision of the committee. I full, I wholeheartedly agree. It is going to give us way more information than STAR ever did. STAR was primarily a screener that kind of assessed risk, but didn't give teachers the actionable data to then go that step further. So what Dibbles will do is it, it, it targets very specific subtests within each grade that are highly predictive of either reading success or reading challenge. So if we see on that screener very early on that they are having struggles with a certain area, it, it not only will help the teachers group their kids, it will give them activities to do with them. It will provide the reading interventionists with opportunities and specific skills to work on that will help build that reading foundation fast and early. And there's not only three benchmark parts throughout the year that will help us to determine that on an ongoing basis, but the ability to progress monitor and see how we, we start to close that gap with intervention. So it's going to be a slam dunk, especially with our MTSS process and how that goes into our strategic plan. I think it's going to be a really good addition to our literacy program.
I definitely look forward to seeing the data on that because I know that this is a very important area for us is catching students with, with learning needs at a younger age, especially when it comes to reading and decoding. I mean, personally, I miss Leapfrog, Letter Factory. Don't know if anybody else used that with their kids, but it was fantastic. So I, I, you know, I'm just hoping that we get an opportunity to see some of this in action. I know it's being offered in English and Spanish. I don't know if students who are primarily Spanish speakers at the very young grades might be given this in Spanish so that we can actually catch it harder for somebody who's, you know.
Jeff Schenker and I have had some side conversations. He was actually on the committee that chose it. So we actually have a meeting set up with Dibbles to kind of explore what exactly, who, who would be a good person or, or child to possibly use that? And, and in what circumstances might we use it? So absolutely, that was a, a nice bonus that we saw with that one as well.
Thank you. And I will let the, the answers that Mr. D'Amico provided from all of you guys speak for themselves. If you can pose those, that way you don't have to go over now.
Christina.
Thank you. I kind of two points. I just wanted you to talk a little bit about, did one committee make all the different decisions? The waiver and the education, yeah, just kind of talk about who participated in terms of input. And that was just kind of just anecdotal. And then the other part was about, talk about the Hagerty, am I even right? Hagerty's, because you said we're using them at Hamav already? Or no, yes?
It's been, it's been in pre-K and Hamav.
If you could just talk a little bit about that and count about, you know, how it's gone and the decision to integrate it into everyone's curriculum.
Do you want to start, do you want to start with committees or? Okay. Okay, so the waiver was, has been, you know, an administrative collaboration, not only with other districts, but in, in our, our collaborative team in looking at our curriculum. As far as Hagerty is concerned, that was part of that waiver process. Like that was one of the missing pieces, a quick refinement to our curriculum. And that was something that, you know, I researched, kind of brought to my literacy specialists, got their input as well. And we've had Hagerty within our intervention program since maybe about December, January. And they've been using it in intervention and they've been sharing it and, and having really nice results with that. We've also been talking to neighboring districts about who uses foundations and what they're using. And nine out of 10 times, they're all pairing it with Hagerty because it works so nicely together. So Hagerty is a phonemic awareness program that's designed for kids in kindergarten and first grade. As you saw maybe on the slides, that we're going to implement it in K two whole class this year because it is, it can be in, in second grade too. And we're primarily doing it in K two this year to kind of bridge the gap for those current first graders that, that didn't receive it. And then we're getting our second, our second grade teachers trained. And then they'll have that as a supplemental resource, resource for small group instruction in subsequent years. And so we feel firmly phonemic, phonemic awareness is one of those things that is the foundational skills that if that phonics is built upon. And it is a really high predictor, both of kids that struggle and kids that are successful in reading. It's a really strong predictor of that. So if we can implement that explicit instruction early and build that foundation, we, we're, we're on a good start. So I'm trying to think if there was anything. And then the, the committee for Dibbles, we had about, I think, six teachers and four administrators spanning L, special education, classroom teachers of various grades. We really wanted to make sure that we were picking the best for, for everybody. And, and I think their unanimous decision speaks for the one we actually chose.
Awesome, thank you. Is this something that we as a board have, I know it's listed as a discussion item. Do we need to vote on it? Because it's not really, it's programmed, not curriculum material. Okay, just checking. Thank you so much.
Michael.
That was going to be my, my final question.
I beat you to it.
Well, because, so I guess the, look, I start talking and Mark moves over to the podium. Look, there's no secret that I've been, I've been critical of units of study as a curriculum long before I was on the board. You know, I had op-eds in the paper in 2019, in, in 2019 and 2018. But there, I'm not a literacy expert. This is not my area of expertise. So despite nods from my, my colleagues on the board, I respect all of your, your opinions that I know you've, you've reviewed them. I know you've talked to Dr. Hawkins personally about, about this decision. The, my, my, and I love the, the visual that you put together with the different pieces of puzzle, how the different pieces of puzzle, puzzle represent the five pillars of reading. And I understand, I guess my only, my concern here, my continuing question, and I do wonder if it is a board conversation, something we could decide upon, is the, how the units of study fits into that comprehension, comprehension piece? Because units of study existed for many years, the, and resisted revision for many years, despite a lot of the quote, science of reading that goes back decades. Now we have a new revision that came out last year. Depending on the curriculum material, the, the material, it's either 98, 98% of similar to what it was before, or it's very much a recognition of the science and about face and, and the change. And if it is a big change, I guess my question is then one of process. Because if it is a real big, a big change, then I suspect it might be a matter of some differences of opinion on the board. But if my, if it is a big change, I, it strikes me as something that at some point we as a board probably have to vote on because our job is to prove the curriculum. This is our K, if this is a big part of our K five curriculum, particularly when it speaks to comprehension, is it a tweak? And if it's a tweak, then I've got other concerns. Or is it a big change? And if it's a big change, then is it something we have to vote on? And I know that gets into complications about process because at the same time, we've got a waiver already approved with the state. And I don't know how that deals that. So I think that's something that probably we need, it probably is a lengthier conversation than probably the spring. Because my assumption is we have to get to the waiver process first. But at some point, if it is a big curriculum change, it's our job as a board. I would argue that it probably to, to vote on it.
Madam Secretary.
I guess that leads me to the only other question that I had had, which I had asked. You know, I know that some with geodes and at least Hagerty, you were mentioning that there's support and there's support material. And I just want to make sure that the materials that are included have just, have been vetted by our, our curriculum council or those that are looking at the, you know, the materials that we put in front of our kids.
What materials are you referring to?
You said that there were books or readings for decoding and things like that for the students. I just want to make sure that they align with everything that we've, you know, approved for, for our students. And it's, they've been looked at. That's all. If they're new.
They have, but, but I think we have to take a step back. And, and I think it's an important conversation with the board and, and the superintendent. I certainly like to participate in that as well as defining primary resources for instruction versus supplementary resources. And to what extent, either does the board wish to be involved in those decisions or believes they need to be involved in those decisions? So providing us with the guardrails, my team actually would be greatly appreciative of that because we certainly promote a very inclusive and collaborative approach to our work, very transparent. We work extremely well with the GEA. And we feel it's important that you know what decisions we're making and why. I will say, we're working under an incredibly compressed timeline this year due to the uncertainties in terms of the way the information rolled out from the state. I was expecting the question of what happens if our waiver isn't approved? And I will tell you, in, in watching other assistant superintendents report out to their board, the answer is simply this, we don't know. And that's not a good place to live in the middle of April, knowing that we have so much to plan for. Professional learning, planning professional learning requires time. It, it requires, if you're having specialists come in to present, you have to book them well in advance. You know, this year has been a bit of a challenge only because the state has decided to insert themselves in what's otherwise usually a local board decision. So we're, we're navigating waters that are, are a bit untraditional. But again, I, but I go back to, we're happy to set up either curriculum advisory committees or textbook review committees. If we understand more clearly what the board recognizes as a primary resource that, that is compelling you to endorse or approve.
Karen. Oh, Tony, you want to add something here?
Yeah, I, I do. And I think you'll see the difference between what Kim is presenting tonight and then with our pre-K, which is absolutely brand new. And that's why it's on here for a board decision. We were not a district, like a lot of districts across the country, that were aversive to phonics. You know, we're in our fourth year of foundations, which is very strong. So I think that's why we're saying ours really is more of a tweak. We've had the units of study. We've been implementing phonics. Those components are there. We're trying to enhance what we do, but this is very much about program and materials. It's about, we never take like book sets, for instance, that would be in a classroom. We, we couldn't even begin, I don't think, to bring every single thing to the board. But again, when you see, when you hear pre-K in a minute, that is brand new. We've never had what, what, you know, he is going to be presenting for us, Joe. So we want the board's approval on that.
Karen.
Maybe I can short, short circuit the discussion a little bit and something that we can take up in our next policy meeting that's being scheduled for next week. Because I think this is an ongoing discussion based upon how we view policies 6161 and 6141 because both of those policies deal with respect to design of curriculum and the approval of it. And if you were to look at, you know, the definition here and how it says, it's any textbook or learning material that will serve as the function of the textbook, textbook, whether it's hard copy or digital, must go through the district curriculum as well as approval by the board. And to me, what it sounds like, despite the fact we're making tweaks, we are, we are changing the curriculum. I don't, it depends on how you define a tweak, but a tweak is a change. And I think we need to understand better because it would be my opinion, unless I can be swayed otherwise, that it would need approval. And I'm not saying you wouldn't get it, but I'm just saying for process and policy purposes for which this board follows, we would need to approve it.
Well, if I may, I think we have to have further discussion on this. So. So, uh, we'll just, uh, end it now. I think we have to figure out where we land and then, uh, so we'll move on. Everyone okay with that? Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Preschool curriculum recommendation, Dr. H and Mr. Baines.
Good evening, Chairman Kelly, Dr. Jones, Board of Education. So following that, we're actually talking about our pre-K curriculum. The last time that the preschool had a curriculum started in twenty sixteen. And so starting toward the end of last year, we started discussing what are some of the needs out of our preschool classes? And this year we implemented foundations. So we moved that into. The preschool to start working on bridging between what's happening in preschool and what's happening in our, our kindergarten. And we also implemented, it was mentioned earlier Hegarty at our Ham Ave pre-K class. Again, trying to get all those pre-reading skills. But we started talking about how do we have a more comprehensive curriculum? And so starting this fall. Led first by Cara Vitolo, who is now the official, our former preschool coordinator, but now AP at Glendale, and then taken over by Joe Baines. Led the curriculum process and looking at our preschool or pre-K curriculum. So I'm going to turn that over to Joe.
Thank you very much, Dr. Halligan Toller. I did, I didn't bring chess boards for everybody, but I do have. Some materials to, to pass around. So I'm just gonna go ahead and put it here. So while you're looking, I could, I'll ask, what questions can I, can I answer?
Well, I have a question strangely enough. I had been spending a little time with the United Way and I understand that I was intrigued. I never knew. Up until recently, what they actually do in partnership with us.
Yes.
And I, it's incredible. I didn't understand it, but I mean, it's very important that, uh, that, well, certainly having a certain course. Like this, that when we have our preschoolers and the ones that we are teaching and giving this course to. Compared to the ones that also filter into the kindergarten from the other various schools around the community. It's important to sort of reach out and create some sort of standardization. So that way no kid has a deficiency when they do reach kindergarten. So, and they explained to me that they get out and try to do that for us when we teach our kids, the ones under our charge. And they get out and try to get the other kids and try to prep them for our kindergarten. So could you give me, I heard, I, I was intrigued by their perspective, but I'd love to hear yours.
Yes. Well, we actually have our, our amazing United Way consultant here as well. And we actually met with the, the, uh, the student readiness committee, the school readiness committee today. And we spoke to one of our head, our head start program about how they're using the creative curriculum as well. And how amazing it's been in, in their program and how it's really helped teachers with their. Uh, individualization of, of, of the material and, you know. Just really been a major benefit. So having that continuity within the, within the, within the town is amazing. Definitely. Yeah.
Well, just one more for me that I'll hand it up to you guys. Is there something? And maybe you can't give the answer now, but is there something that us as board members can do to help this partnership? I think, I, I think it's great. And just, just if you can let me know how we can help this in some way.
The, oh, the partnership with United Way? Yeah.
You know, uh, Dave Raven has been great with United Way. Um, we just recently, I think it's in tonight's. Electronic version, maybe tomorrow's paper about, um, the furniture donation for our pre-K at the Julian Curtis preschool class. I think just the continued support in the donations they provide us. Last year was my first experience with bringing in a donation through the district. And that was, you know, like, where's this check coming from? And so, you know, they have just been great partners. And I think, you know, just supporting both, you know, both sides as we work together. And I know even talking about something like this in a public forum and giving the United Way the credit that they deserve for the support that they provide us.
Thank you. Karen, Madam Secretary.
I think I need a sash that says that. Okay. First of all, thank you for the great presentation. I actually enjoyed a lot of the videos that you had there. It sort of showed, it gave us a really good feeling for, for. You know, some of the programs.
Thank you.
The question I had, I think I had sent in advance. I was just sort of wondering. Since Joe touched upon this, if any of the kindergarten teachers at our public schools have been involved in the committee to kind of go look through this program. One of the things we always talk about and how important it is, is to have our curriculums aligned. To help with that transition to support students moving from pre-K into our kindergarten classrooms. So I don't know if you can talk a little bit about that, if we've gotten feedback from those teachers.
We didn't have the kindergarten teachers on the curriculum, but one of the things that was very important when we. When we started looking for curriculum was making sure that we could continue our alignment. So continue to keep things like foundations and second step. That are preparing our students for kindergarten. And when we were looking at many of the curriculums, some of them wouldn't coexist, but this one not only coexisted. With those, but also they had experience with other districts that had used the same program. So they were able to. You know, they're gonna, if they, when they come and train us, they're gonna come and train us and also talk, train us on how to coexist. With foundations and second step. Uh, so that was a really important for us to continue to be aligned in this throughout the entire process.
That's awesome, actually. So, uh, we'd love to have our students, um, be able to continue onward and, and be prepared, as prepared as possible. And so I know the other question was, is one of the biggest things we really like to do is sort of also focus on parent support. In the pre-K area, it's, it's so important for our parents to, to be able to know what. How to help their students at home get to access to the things that they need. Um, I know this program is offered in languages, both in English and Spanish. And so I assume, does that also, does it also provide? Any kind of materials for parents and parent support? Let our teachers have that opportunity to, to work with parents at home?
Yes, actually that's one of the, the things we're most excited about. You know, it has a robust library. Can, am I in the microphone? Okay. Has a robust library of eBooks for students and parents in both English and Spanish. It has an app that parents can go on and, and see what they're doing in class and, and track progress. We had, you can send home mini lessons for, you know, at home investigations, um, you know, and all the lessons come with, come with ideas for. Parent engagement throughout the lesson. So we think it's so important not just to involve parents and. You know, maybe at the end of the school year or one night, but involve them in what we're doing across the entire year. Um, and, and the lessons come with ideas of how you can incorporate learning at home as well. If you're studying balls, maybe. You know, an idea could be to go home and, and how many balls do you have in your house? You know, which ones roll? Easily on the floor, which ones don't, and you know, and investigate why. So. Yeah, it's, it's really exciting, the parent engagement options that are, that are featured.
Thank you. I know that this looks interesting. I can't wait to delve into some of the toys you brought with us.
Yeah, actually, as a parent, I've, I have two little girls that are around this age and it actually, that's one of the things that really excited me about it because I could see myself, you know. Using it at home as well. So, and I.
Well, no further questions. I must comment that you have a really cool job. So, yeah. So that's all right. Yeah. All right. Thanks very much.
Yes. If you want to keep looking at them, that's fine. Let's take them by the end of the.
Okay, Dr. Jones, meeting agenda.
Um, just a couple of notes, again, taking feedback from what the board has. You know, provided that you wanted to see on almost, on almost every meeting you'll find throughout this agenda. Plan that there's something focused on curriculum so that we don't just get so hung up on all of our building committees. And not be talking about instruction. So you also, if you note on October fifth, one thing that the board, now that we have a strategic plan. You wanted to be able to hear the update about the site plan that's built in so that we will all know and have those in front of the board early. I know one request that the board wanted, and I had explained this in the chair and vice chair meeting. It's just almost impossible to eliminate one of those meetings in September if we are going to have our new capital process. Because that capital, you know, the board retreat is a full meeting on its own. One of the other things that we have done in here is that you'll see again where there is a retreat. That is actually focused on February eighth. And that is the executive session on the special education update, outplacement and settlements, which. We've come to get used to, and I think everyone finds very helpful. But then I've also listed the executive session, the board seemed to want. This year that we did for the first time, which was the legal update on any pending litigation that the town of Greenwich attorneys would come and update us on. So that's new on this agenda. But again, you know, often these reports, uh, you know, very much mirror the same time of the year. And we kind of model because it has to do with either when we're getting testing results or things of that nature. So I'll take questions or if there's anything that somebody saw that you're wondering why it is the way that it is.
Christina.
Thank you. Um, so Tony, just a couple of quick points. Um, I know, because this is an informational. One thing I see is you have your, um, your presentation of your superintendent goals on September seventh. But then we don't vote till October nineteenth. I think that's too long. I think, you know, you're kind of, you know, you set your goals. It seems to me, my colleagues may disagree that we should be voting on them sooner than that. Just because, you know, it's a chunk, you're already now six weeks into the year. So that would just be a suggestion to maybe move them. Query into the September business meeting. Just food for thought. Then two other things that just jumped out at me. Do we need a Westerns? I know we have Western soil updates. I think you have it in every month. Cause I know we were doing that this year. Hopefully it'll be, you know, we won't need it. It'll just be kind of in superintendent's report committee reports. And then my last point was, I think you have the February meeting for a first read of graduation and last day of school. And I think there's still a lot of opportunities for snow in February, and I think we usually do that in March.
It's when it has generally shown up on our plan and we end up moving it, but you know, but we can now, we have more flexibility. Over the last couple of years since the law changed where we can go ahead and set the graduation date, which, you know, previously. To you go back two, three years ago, we couldn't do that. Um, so we, I'm happy to move it or leave it. It doesn't really matter. The W, the Western soil update, when we met on our planning. Uh, I, what I heard was that we made a commitment to be sure we keep the community updated. So I just left it on there. And then if, when it's done and we're light speed ahead, we'll just take it off.
Michael.
Yeah, I guess Tony, I guess the one, one thought with the, the superintendent goals, and I don't know if it makes sense or not, if the, to what Christina was saying, if there was, I had a similar thought, if there was any value in actually moving it. To June. Because I guess historically the superintendent goals have been in September because you wait for the test results and things like that. But now that we have, we have more longer term metrics, we kind of already know what some of those benchmarks are. So I don't know if. Moving the first read in June makes sense or not. I don't know. And then, and then we come back and we vote in September. I guess that's kind of when you're kind of.
That seems like a big lag though, doesn't it? Like, you know, if we see something in, in June and then we don't vote till September.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, that's why I was trying to compress it from the six weeks. And now you're, you're adding three months. Yeah, I don't know. I don't know the right answer, but.
Right, right. As I've heard Journey, I know June is often. In admin world, June has spent, a lot of June has spent thinking about September. The, um, so you're already, my assumption is you already have all some, some sense of what's going on. Maybe not.
Kathleen, oh my God, you have to answer the question before I go to the next question. Sorry.
Yeah, no, I think it really doesn't matter to me, to be honest. Um, I think from the curriculum team standpoint, we have our management plan. We know what we're doing.
Right.
So, yeah, I can do it in June. It just, uh, it's, it's really probably more trying to get it. Get it posted on time and to be ready just with graduation and everything else that would be happening. But I'm happy. I can do it either way.
Kathleen.
Yeah, I was just going to say, Tony, I mean, June always seems to be like a race to the finish line and the summer is probably a time for you to actually sit back and be a little more strategic. So I would think if I were you as a CEO, I'd sort of want to take that time to take a step back and think about it over the summer, but it's not my plan. On the social studies. In September, I assume that that means, and I think you've told us this before already. So that's kind of. You know, we did math one year, we did language arts another. Is this like, this is, this is due now, the social studies. Curriculum is what we're going to be looking at next. Is that?
That's not actually curriculum. This is an add on here and it's because we should be ready by September. Dr. Cara below, I don't know if you had anything to add to that, but that has the social studies that is on here for September twenty first. It's an AP class, I believe. Yes.
Oh, right. You raised it. Okay. Fair enough. Sorry. It's now coming back to me.
Because I'm serving, I'm serving on the committee for that textbook.
For sure.
So, and we will have it ready for September. So I think, you know, because it's a half year class at an AP spring term class at high school. If we vote on it or review it in September, it'll be fine for January.
Thank you. Karen, Madam Secretary.
I, I had a similar concern, well, not concern, but question about doing superintendent goals and having them presented in September, only because I know. A, we now have a strategic plan and they're going to pretty much align with that and. You know, all your, a lot of your work is already planned for over the summer. So I mean, I'm certainly, maybe it's not a discussion for tonight, but would love to talk to you about that. The question I actually was going to bring up was our October fifteen, October fifth board retreat. It sort of doesn't really seem like an actual retreat because there's so much there. Um, I know our retreats, especially like this was developed as a deep dive on a subject or to do some sort of professional development. And last year we changed this particular board retreat on that date to a special meeting. But yeah, I know you are adding capital planning here and some other action items. But it concerns me just because I, I know this is supposed to be a retreat in a way for us to, to have a lot of time to really take a deep dive into things like. Curriculum and data and, and climate survey and our strategic plan and any adjustments we need to make. Especially since that'll be the first time we're really going to be able to, to focus on that. So. Um, I'm not sure if there's a possibility we can move some of the things around there. And the only other thing is especially since later in our agenda tonight, we'll be discussing. Board goals. Uh, and one of the things we are supposed to do, it is policy is to do board. Professional development, and I do not see that located anywhere here. So. I would love to take a look and some, and make some suggestions when we come to our, between now and when we see this again. As we may have some turnover in the board in November. Planning something for after that, not just onboarding of new members, but it's a, an perfect opportunity to. Provide professional development for current members, returning board members and any one new who will be joining us. Uh, we can discuss topics at some other point, but.
Yeah, I might just speak to, it is, it is a heavy retreat agenda, but. I, I wasn't really concerned about it in the sense that they all fit together so closely. Now that we have a strategic plan. The curriculum plan review cycle, it's really, we're not going through big changes like we were three years ago. Our achievement data report is really part of strategic plan. The climate survey is part of the metrics for the, the plan. So I see those all fitting together. If our capital budget, I think, goes as well as it did this first time this year. We did so much work through like the finance committee and that by the time we got to the board, people knew what was there. And also again, because our projects are so planned out. You know, in our fifteen year plan. And again, Blaze has done a lot of work this year to even refine that. So. I don't see it as being as big of a challenge. Um, so that's, I was okay with it because when you look. They're all so busy. Um, we've just got a lot that we want to cover in, in the year.
Okay, good. All right. Next board goals, Mike. I pass my powers over to you.
Before I open up, so with the, because related to the other item, to the previous item, but I wanted to talk about it. So. What we have before us is for first read, although it is certainly not the first time we've seen. A draft version of the, of the board goals. We've been in process for a while now of creating a better governance process around supporting our own, our own board goals. I would argue, and I know Karen Hurst sent a different opinion earlier today. That when thinking about the board goals and thinking about how it fits into the previous thing of the agenda. We might want to think about, and we talked about this before. Doing the board goals on a different cadence than the academic year. Because the board goals, unlike superintendent goals that are more academic focused, the board goals are focused more around. The work of the board. Itself, and the board reorganizes in November. With new members, we will likely have some new members in November. We will have elections of officers and things. With new members, we will likely have some new members in November. We will have elections of officers and things, you know, new. Possible new chair and new committee assignments and things like that. So my, my argument would be. That would be when we would create with those new roles and responsibilities and chairs and everything else. That's when. The board goal conversation would take place for the following, and the board goals would work on a calendar year. I also think that would help cadence wise. If we're talking about strategic plan goals and superintendent goals and things like that on an academic basis. Then it's a lot easier for us to then pivot. I think that's part of the reason why we have such challenges with board goals historically. They, it'll be a lot easier for us to pivot to board goals mid-year with the reorganization. So that's, so I just wanted to put that out there before we talk about the actual document itself, but go ahead, Christina.
Yeah, no, no, I see your point, Mike, but I think the challenge is, you know, you have people turnover in whatever form in November. And you're also in the middle of budget season. So as a practical matter, board goals don't really happen in that timeframe. And, and, and that's only every other year. So I, I, I think. I, I see your point, but I still think as a board, you know, we start the school year, we kind of have a plan for what. We want to get accomplished during the school year and then. Ours can be kind of aligned to the superintendents, which are more on a school year, like the board goals and the super goals are kind of on the same timeframe. I'm concerned that putting them on a different schedule creates a little bit to of a mishmash. And, and, and again, because you're only talking about a turnover issue every two years. It's not like that's an annual event.
We have, we, we have committee assignments every year.
But you're talking about the board as a whole, not committees. The board is a whole, right. So committee assignments should really not matter for what the board as a whole wants to accomplish.
Yeah.
True or false, right? I mean.
Some, some of the, some of.
The mechanics may be different.
Some of the goals are, you know, of the, of, of the board undoubtedly will work towards the committee. I mean, I hear you. I think.
Who's going to do the work is definitely falls on the committee, but it just.
I hear you. I think part of, I think part of my, my concern, a part of concern is we establish, we work and have established goals in September. Then we have elections in November and then, you know, and those that work all fizzles out because we've got new people that don't have ownership of the thing.
Right. But at the same time, if you have, there's also some people who come onto the board who really don't have the knowledge. And the background to be able to make those evaluations with new board members. And so it's better to have board, have goals.
I think we need to give the new, new members a chance to have ownership of the goals, especially if they were voted, but I'm sorry, I defer.
I mean, I'm just going to say, having been on the board for a while, we never tend to agree on these goals. And you guys can't even agree on the timing. So I'm going to suggest, I'm sorry, Joe, but could we maybe move along on this agenda? Because I don't think we're going to agree on this tonight. So I think we keep going on. There's a lot of action items ahead.
Are there any discussion, comments on the, on the, on the draft, draft itself?
Should we just send them to you in writing? Wouldn't that be more efficient?
I am perfectly fine with that.
Okay, then I'll take my powers back and shall, we shall move on. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Next we go to racial balance. Dr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. For racial balance, first of all, let me just clarify, this is just an update. This is not, this is not considered our racial balance report. Generally that comes to you in the fall and there's a tremendous amount of data in it. This was just trying to give you an update and you'll even notice on the, on the last page. These are like updated information. These are our district count from December, but that's not our official numbers. We have to wait and get those from the state. Because they do change all the time. I also do want to note on the schools to watch, I should have also on the fifteen percent threshold listed, Joey and Curtis. So I don't know if it fell off or what happened, but. They are sitting, I think it's right around eighteen percent. So just for those who are watching that may not understand the calculation. They look at our district in our K five schools in two different ways. One is K five and the other is pre K five. And you are compared with like schools. So the buildings that have pre K are compared to other buildings that have pre K five. The K five buildings are compared on a district level just to K five. If we are impending, that means there's a fifteen percent difference. From the district average, because they take all those schools, they tell us what the average is. And you can either be below the average, which means you're not a very diverse school. Or you could be above that average, which means that there's more diversity there. Above and beyond the average of the district. So when you look at that, our threshold for out of balance right now. It is Ham Avenue Lebanon that they consider to be out of balance. But when you look on the bottom of that first page. You still have buildings like North Street, Old Greenwich Parkway, that from the state perspective would say are not diverse enough. And that's why you see the negative because they're under the average. And then when you look at ISD, it's impending. At fifteen percent. Heading in the direction more like a Hamilton Avenue or New Lebanon with more diversity. Then on the second page, what you're seeing is an update based on. But the, what, what the conversation has been like when we've gone in front of. The State Board of Education, their subcommittee. So they always talk to us about redistricting. There are generally three districts that are challenged with this issue in the state of Connecticut. It's usually West Hartford, Fairfield and Greenwich. And so we show up and we're named almost every year. In some districts, it all depends on the capacity, for instance, like redistricting. Fairfield is very different than we are geographically in how their schools are, where they're located, what their road network looks like. They're in the process right now. I've been following their, their meetings as well, just to see what the state board has been commenting. Because we're right in similar situations, same number of schools. And they are going through redistricting. And Greenwich, we've really tried to express strongly when we're at the state board. That we cannot put five year olds and seven year olds on a bus for an hour to go across town. And I think Kathleen, you were at the meeting where they pulled up their GPS and said, oh, it's only X amount of miles. And it's like, we will invite you to come drive that at, at school start time. That's, no, it's not. It's, it's, it's a big, it's a big trek. So it's looking at, are there other things we can do? And we had a good conversation with them in January. And one of the things that was recommended was to look at intra-district like an open choice. And what that would mean is if you have a building that is under, they don't have enough diversity in that building. And let's say they have class sizes because you had to add an extra teacher and there's only seventeen in a class, but it was too many. You know, too many students to not have that section, then you would have some seats that you could offer. Only to those buildings that are considered over. And the idea that the state is suggesting is that you're helping to balance your district. But you're able to do that more in a manner that is choice. So it's almost kind of like what you do with a magnet, but you're only offering seats to certain schools, which are not considered balanced. And so that's something we'll continue to watch through the summer. I'm looking at all of our, our numbers right now. Jen Lau does a lot of this work with me. We've met over the last couple of weeks. Because you have to really go in and say, okay, how many students would it take to shift to really be in balance? But it's, it's really a greater issue than that because you're lifting that whole district average. So even if you don't get it completely out of balance, you're still helping a building, say like Ham Ave. Because you're raising the district balance. So their percentage in comparison to the district narrows. Which is what we want to have happen. When we went to the state at the beginning of the year or at the end of last year. We were really, really close, but because it changes each year, you just don't know. But getting the whole district a little bit more balanced and doing it by choice. Is a really good conversation to have. And it is a strategy that they do utilize in other districts. And you've probably heard, Darian had a big conversation this year in their district about open choice out of the district. So there are districts like Fairfield that take students from Bridgeport in order to try to balance. But that's outside the district. This is just talking about our students and our families that live in Greenwich. So it is a good solution that probably needs, you know, more thorough vetting, but it's something I think we can definitely look at. The other thing is just enhancing the magnet theme in general. So. This is something that we're looking at and Dr. Caribilla is helping with this. She's done quite a bit of work, just even looking at calendars across the country to have a year round calendar. We already run February school, we run April school, we already do that. So it's really looking at how could we have a more permanent kind of solution that would be a year round option? That could be really helpful for families. But then also looking at that six to six. Would that attract some families that, that's, that's a huge bonus for families that work. And six to six is again, is another kind of a theme or approach that has been tried in Connecticut and it has worked. When I was in Fairfield, I had, I can't remember how many students, but there were, there were families that would opt out of Fairfield. To go to Bridgeport's six to six, because it was a beautiful building and they weren't having to pay before care and after care and. And it was a learning opportunity, like what happens in that longer day was not just like you're outside playing. I mean, it was also instructional in nature. So again, it's really looking. At what we could do there and what would be the budgetary input. If we were going to do something like that, we would want to add instructional days. Because you also would want to be having that student achievement as a focus to help close that gap. And we've been looking and I believe it was twenty, we were looking at about adding twenty days. So you would have teachers that want to work longer, but again, we have a lot of teachers that teach February school, that teach April school and they do summer school. So I, I think it's a matter of getting the right people who would really buy into that. And you have breaks at different times in the year, which those people who have ever been on a year round calendar has its own benefits too. Some people really, really like it. So those are some things that we're exploring. These are conversations again that came up when Joe and I were at the state. And they have already let us know, we will be invited back again in the fall.
Yes, very fun. Karen.
Thank you for this update. I had some similar questions to at least, I know one speaker who'd, who'd address some of the. Questions about the enhancing the magnet theme and six by six. I know you guys aren't ready to answer those. Is it best for us to just send those questions over to you? So yeah, I'll do that so that you have time to, to, to do some more research.
Thank you. And Karen, I'll ask you, did you have a question?
Question sort of comment. I understand since we have to go back in the fall with a plan as to what we're going forward. I think we need to include time within our calendar that we aren't going back to. Regarding when we're going to see the proposed plan, being able to provide comments and approve it. Before it, it goes, before it's presented to the state, because if we have a plan and the state likes it, but we as a board don't. I think that presents a problem.
So the thinking there is when we're, when we're going back in the fall, my understanding is we'll probably be back in front of the subcommittee again. And it really, this is a concept, this magnet thing, we've actually talked about this probably for well over a year. But it takes time and it, it, we couldn't do this by September of twenty three. We would need to plan this in the budget. It would need to be part of our.
I'm sorry, I think you misunderstood. I mean, if we're presenting a plan of what we think we, what we want to talk about to the committee. If we're presenting a plan saying, this is what we're proposing, we will look at or do. What I'm saying is I think it needs to, I would like it to come to the board in advance so that we have an opportunity to comment on it.
Yeah, they haven't asked for that, for an update on the actual plan. They've asked for us to come basically with ideas again. So in the fall, let's say we were able to do, you actually, we actually could do the intra-district in the fall, depending on how enrollment falls. And that would be something we would want to discuss as a board before the school year started for sure. And I wouldn't know that until probably halfway through the summer.
That's all I'm saying. What I'm saying is whatever proposals or discussion items that we're presenting to the state. I'm asking that they come to the, before the board so that we have an opportunity to review them and give commentary on what we think about them.
Well, I'll make sure that gets on the agenda. Okay. Everybody else good? All right, moving on. Blaze, you awake?
Good evening, everybody. I'm awake. Hello?
Hello.
Good to see you. So, okay, financial report. So, you know, exciting topic to talk about here to keep everyone awake. We've got financial report. So nothing. Too major to report outside of what was on the summary sheet. The major thing to note would be that. We are in a budget freeze right now. We enacted a budget freeze on March twentieth, twenty twenty three. We're hoping to potentially be able to unfreeze for a few things at least. At the start of May. For context, the drivers of the expense, the overages and expenses. Have been the substitute budget, which we currently have a deficit of about a quarter million after the ARP support. Electricity, which we saw a major rate increase this year, which was a little over about two hundred thousand. Special education, which we recently received the interim that we went through through the town on Monday of one point one million. That still leaves us with, that was, that was a huge relief. That still leaves us with a negative around about a half a million we're absorbing. And then facilities overtime, which after the ARP support, we're still as of April at a negative about a hundred thousand. So a couple of fairly large dollar amounts. We've had obviously ARP support. We've got the budget freeze in place while we're cleaning things up, really organizing a lot of data, working with all the principals to go through a lot of our salary. Lines and confirm data and move things around. And the transportation contract and. And Elmer have really been on top of tracking things from the start of the year. With some of the transportation things and that, that recording of some of those savings versus what was encumbered at the start of the fiscal year. Will provide some, some pretty significant relief on that front. I would say that otherwise the school lunch fund is healthy. The universal free lunch program is operational. We're still not certain on a piece of the reimbursement, but. It's a significant still reimbursement. It should keep a healthy school lunch fund. Working closely with Stacy's team on the out of district and monitoring the special education expenses. And working really to, Dan Watson's been doing a great job with his team. Really trying to execute a lot of capital and then also clean up some of the capital accounts and then close capital and return to the town if the project's complete.
Perfect. Nice. I have a, just one question that a lot of other people ask the question. You say we're at a budget freeze. When I deliver my check for six hundred dollars for the use of the stadium bathroom for the G Y F L, will that take us out of the freeze?
It'll take us that many more dollars closer.
Anybody else have a question? Christina.
Hi Blaze, good evening. I have a couple of little things. Question, on page two, we talk about that we have one point eight million dollars. Available in grant funds that are going to expire on June thirtieth. Are we going to spend those or what? I know we want to spend every dollar, a grant dollar that we could do. Do we have a plan for how to spend that one point eight?
So far, we're working closely, Dr. Jones, and I are working very closely with the grant managers to get that executed. A big portion of that is payroll. I was a little, I think, I almost had a heart attack when I saw it, when that it went up. From last month by like two hundred thousand dollars in the wrong direction. But a big piece, a big chunk of it, Christina, is that we're cleaning up some data that from all these grant accounts that came in. And all this grant account funding. That happened, a lot of things got a little unorganized and there were so many new grant accounts being set up. So even just actually since this report was done, we've moved a quarter million in grant expense. Like labor charges that should have been in one of those grants that took a quarter million right off like the top. And we have a number of those that we need to move. So that's another chunk of it. That should help that out.
Excellent. Okay. Next question was on the general fund revenue, our adult education. Is way different. Can you just talk about that for a second?
Sure. So on the adult education, what that is, is that we. Actually get that funding back. So when it's, it's in its own fund and there's really no revenue budgeted because whenever we do expenses. We draw down from that account. And then that's when it gets posted, they basically post it that as revenue. And I'm saying they, that's town finance when we request it. They post, they post it as revenue and then they increase the corresponding expense budget line. And so that, what that means is that we've drawn down eighty six thousand dollars in. Funding to increase the, but the expense line.
Okay, great. Just as I, I like the way you've broken down the open capitals between. Just as I like the way you've broken down the open capitals between the building committees and the non-building committees. I mean, you may have done it before, but I'm just, I'm saying it's nice. I like it. On the ARP page, I just want to be sure I understand it properly. The 2,146,563 of remaining balance. Is that just, is that money appropriate? Well, is it kind of earmarked or appropriated to stuff? Or is that money that we're going to have left at the end of the school year or? Where are we? Cause I think, isn't all the ARP money supposed to be spent by June, uh, I'm sorry, September 30th of this year?
It's of next year. So we still have another year. So the accounting is something that we've artificially made up for these three fiscal years to just kind of organize things. So that funding is not, it's not actually tied to a fiscal year. It's not even organized that way. It's actually just a lump sum from last year and this year. And then when the town appropriates the next funding for 24, it'll be one more lump sum kind of added to that account. So this, this is actually artificially made up. We still have another year to spend.
Okay. So I'm off by a year on the deadline. It's really September of 24.
It's 24, yep.
Oh, okay. I was thinking it was this year. So.
We actually this month just encumbered probably about half a million dollars. Kimberly Castoro, I know has been keeping things really organized, our financial analyst. And she has been working with the grant managers, many of whom are there tonight, Mark's team on some of these supplies. We've, we've entered about half a million and approved ARP charges about over the last two weeks.
Awesome. Thank you. And then my last question is, is I know we went in and got our interim on the special ed out of district. So we had a shortfall, but then there was this additional SESS required support expenses. Cause we're covering part of the special ed deficit ourselves and part of it was covered by the BET or RTM or the town money. So could you just speak briefly as to the 420, what it relates to?
Sure.
We're adding that to the shortfall of the 1.241.
Yeah, part of that is just a growing number since then in the out of district tuition program. So it just being larger than the 1.1 that we asked for. And then the other piece of it is, and Dr. H will explain this much better than I, but is charges that are related to special education and required support services like homebound tutors, certain academic required tutoring programs and things that are, and also some special education transportation, things that are not specific to the out of district program, but are required SESS expenses.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, everybody good? Oh, Karen.
I had one question and it relates to the events of this past week. Based upon our bus contract, do we have any savings because no one showed up to work on Monday?
That would be, we have a, a day's worth of, I believe another penalty was, will be assessed to the company of a full day's worth of, of no bus activity.
And sorry Blaze, sorry to put you on the spot, but about how much of money is that? I mean, I know it's not.
$70,000.
I'm sorry, what is it?
It's about $70,000.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you Blaze. You'll be back. Action items. We, I just want to say something first that we are the most functional and friendly board in the entire town. And sometimes we mostly agree on most things and occasionally sometimes we disagree. Please respect your colleagues disagreements. They rarely happen and, and they might coming up here. So, uh, may I pass it off to?
Mr. Kelly, I think you, you skipped an item, not to interrupt. There was the non voted transfers, the 3160 was listed as an information item. It's financial staffing report and 3160 budget transfers. It's on the agenda.
It's getting off. Easy on that one.
It's a separate, separate piece paper.
Yeah, but it's listed as an action item.
No, no, there's, there's informational ones and action ones. There's two sets of transfers.
Blaze, do you have anything more to say here?
Two, the transfer, these informational ones are what they are. And if we're, if anyone has any questions, I'll take them.
Okay. Any questions? Christina, thank you for pointing that out.
Just, just making sure we don't skip anything.
Okay, I'm going to take my magical chair powers and pass them over to Karen Kowalski. We're going to talk about the Hamilton Avenue field use request.
Thanks, Joe. So I'm going to, Christina, you can help me with this. Put a motion on. Do I read the motion?
Read the motion and someone has to second it.
So I make the, I want to do the in order. So I make the following motion. The Greenwich Board of Education recognizes the value of the St. Rock Annual Feast for the Hamilton Avenue School Community. The board hereby agrees that St. Rock Church is permitted to use the Hamilton Avenue School property, including field court and parking facilities for its annual feast in August. St. Rock Church shall, one, seek and receive an event permit for Park, from Parks and Recreation. Two, proactively begin to work with the T O G Risk Manager 30 days in advance of the annual feast. Three, retain or hire Greenwich Police Department for event security and any additional security subject to G P D's Greenwich Police Department's official request. Do I have a second? Joe seconds? Discussion? Ms. Costin?
Could part of the motion be, when is the feast? Cause it says we have to work with the risk manager 30 days in advance. I think we should be a little specific on the date of the feast.
Perfect. I think the, the date for this year and Mr. Capelli can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it is the ninth to the 11th of August of 2023.
What? Well, I was like, the dates are in the document you sent the last time, right?
Okay. Thank you, Father.
Do we have to?
Well, before you do that, I have a question. Oh.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Sorry, I, I saw that the draft, we had a draft partnership agreement that was before us the last time, which I don't see here. So I'm, I'm not really sure what happened to that. But it had a couple of conditions that I also didn't see included in this motion. So I, I just was wondering what happened to them. One was to ensure that the newly improved basketball court, the school remained protected and free from damage during and after the event. And another one was utilizing access points, property that were determined acceptable by the facilities department. I, cause I know we're doing some work on the parking deck and whatnot. So I just didn't know what happened to some of those pieces and requirements.
So first, with respect to the memorandum of understanding, that is not before us. It is just simply for the church to use the facilities as described during the relevant time period. Having a memorandum of understanding, trying to get that done at the speed that which this board sometimes moves, didn't make sense for those purposes. We can certainly entertain that. But given that that discussion and negotiation would take longer, it is not, nor did we do it last year. So if it's something the board wants to take up separately and regarding the use of it, we can do it at a different point. But the motion before us is simply to allow them to use the facilities as they did last year.
Right. But to use them and based on some details. That's why I'm wondering why those two were left out. Cause I, I know a lot of, of time and effort and I know, I think some of funds even from, from, from the church itself were used to help re-surface and repair at least the basketball court. And I just wanted to make sure that we were being cognizant of that, cognizant of that. So that was one of the, it was just in the last.
Right. It's not here simply because I think that the basic understanding is that the church will leave the facilities in the same condition that it had when it entered them. And there's, if there's, and if there is any property damage, that is what the purpose of the insurance is there for, which was, which is what they're required to have.
Right. But that's why you put it in the motion. If you have, I mean, it's, it's a general understanding of that, but I think it makes it clearer if, if it's, if it's there. I mean, I, I know that it was, it's a big event for the community and, and supported as we've heard by the school and, and the community as a whole. But you know, we just want to also make sure that we're you know, dotting our i's and crossing our t's. So that's why I just want to make sure. Cause it was part of the discussion from, from the, when it was presented to us last time.
Understood. And we've, based upon discussions that I've had, we decided to modify the motion and given the fact that they have to have insurance and the insurance that they were required last year, which I can't imagine would be different than the insurance that they'll be required this year, would cover any damage that would be done to the field regardless, such as the incident that happened that was repaired. So with that understanding, plus they need to see, they need to seek and receive the necessary permits in order to use it, which is outside of our purview. Yes, Ms. Costin?
I feel like it would make some of our members more comfortable if some of the items like returning the facilities to the condition that they were, were part of this motion. I think that would certainly allay the concerns of some of our colleagues. If they're amenable.
Yes, Mr.?
Okay. I, I would say that that would be a good addition. I'd also probably say just something blanket language around following all of the policies and procedures of Greenwich schools. I think that would probably, I know that it was mentioned last time, for example, you know, you can't drink in our schools. If we had a more blanket statement, I think that's very important for our school system. So I'd probably add those two items to the motion.
So it would be to have the facilities returned as they were before. And two, with respect to following school policies. Follow, it just, I'm just trying to capture the language here. So following school policies.
Yeah, I think that, that should cover it.
So I understand that, but I want to just be mindful of the fact that and it will be monitored, but there particularly because you brought up the point on the alcohol piece. Yeah, they, they do serve alcohol on their facilities, which they're allowed to do, and people do walk across. Alcohol is not served on school grounds, but people do end up walking across. And I actually believe that there are board members that also got a beverage and walked across and had alcohol in the facility. So I don't want that to be all of a sudden, they're not allowed to serve alcohol, but then they're attempting to police it, but someone walks across and therefore they get dinged because someone walked across with a beverage onto this property. And I just, I want to be mindful there. I, I have no doubt that Father and the, the police and Mr. Capelli, who are all running this program will be very diligent in making sure that people don't walk across. But I just want to understand what the expectation is of this board to the extent someone ends up and has an open beverage across the street, whether or not that's going to have an impact on them in future years. And what's the view of that?
Well, I can just say from my personal opinion, if it's being served on another property that is not school property, that's, we have no say over that. I think, I mean, that's fine. And I assume, because I know the discussion was that you guys were, you know, the St. Rocks was going to be having added police presence and so forth. There's, we have a no, you know, no open container law anyway in the state of Connecticut, I believe, right? You can't wander around with open alcohol containers. So I don't think crossing across is a, an issue, but as long as it's made aware that, I mean, I assume anytime you sign a contract to use our properties, you have to follow school policy and that's included in that. So, yeah. So I, I don't think the concern is walking from one property to another, because they're hiring security and, and staff.
They are, and it's, and it's required. So if I have it correct, the two ads that we would like is to ensure that the fields are returned to their original condition. And I think we need to be careful what original condition is, but because I get concerned in the sense that obviously we're providing, which we're going to talk about next, the sprinkler system to keep it all green and everything else, but pre-fair condition.
Pre-feast condition.
Pre-feast condition, using the proper terminology. Perfect. And I totally agree with you. And I think that that, that's fair. And that the policies and, and that the policies, the Greenwich Public School policies are followed.
Yeah. And then you just have to add the date. That was so you could just, do you want me to read it? Okay. You just have to add the date to make it August 2023.
Allegedly.
Is that, is that, is that, is that right? So I guess I read this, maybe I may be wrong. I read this as something that we were patting this so that we wouldn't, it wouldn't have to be an, an, an annual tradition here at, at, at board meetings. So that's why I read this as written as, as the August feast.
Our PTAs have to come back every time. You have, I mean, you can't just give something in perpetuity.
Well.
We don't allow the PTAs.
This is a, this is a unique thing, right? They're still doing the, they're still, they're still signing a contract every year and things like that.
They should come back every year.
My, my understanding here is the, the challenge here is that Parks and Rec won't act without our authorization. So we're saying, we are, we don't have an issue with it. They, right this year, Parks and Rec wouldn't even talk to them. They, but we're saying that, look, we as a board don't have an issue with it. The, and that's the resolution we're passing. The, I don't know if we need to pass that resolution every year. And if we have, three years from now, we have an issue, then we could pass it, we can rescind the resolution.
We cannot tie the hands of a future board. I would not vote for that. No way. I've been clear about that with the Capi Alley's, Mr. Capi Alley.
I was trying to avoid this, the, this, this conversation every year, which seems.
Oh, believe me, it's, it would be great if this could be resolved before it gets to the board, but I would not vote for an imperperativity situation. And that would make me very uncomfortable. Because I mean, we would love to see how it goes this year with all the things that they're doing. Maybe it's great, but I think that we can't tie the hands of a future board.
Future board, the future board could rescind it. It's not a, it's not a law forever.
But that's, but the use of our facilities is an annual thing. There is no way that I would vote that way.
Look, I understand that, but I, I, the amount of time that this board ends up having to entertain this. And as much as I'd like to, and I want to see this go. Okay, thank you. Would like to, Cody, I'll get to you in a second. As much as I'd like to, and find talking about this, I'd like to talk about other things. So if we can come up with a way that doesn't, so that this doesn't come to our attention and that it's dealt with appropriately at the levels that it needs to be dealt with, then I'm all for that. And maybe the issue is because I think we need to get moving on this would be pass it with the language, but then come up with a solution going forward. So it doesn't come to us. And it goes through the proper channels. Along, Cody?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I, I think saying that it ties future boards' hands is misleading because all we're saying is what the default is. But at any time, anyone could say, oh, actually let's revisit this and change it. It's just a, to me, it's a question of resources and time of the board. And if this is a useful thing for us to reevaluate every year, or if it makes sense to set the default as a yes, and we only reevaluate it if circumstances change such that we need to, which seems sort of like a logical efficient way to approach it.
Ms. Hirsch?
I, I, I'm, I have a foot in both, both camps. I, I don't think we should be signing this in perpetuity because we would never do that for any other organization, including our partners, uh, in education. We, you know, the PTAs have to apply every year, um, to use our facilities for whatever events. My point is, is that if, I, I think this is something that, you know, with the minor adjustments, we can pass for this year. This isn't something that typically comes to us. It came to us due to, to other things. We have a ti- time between now and next year to work with the town so that there is an understanding that they, St. Rocks does not have to come necessarily to us, um, every year for approval. It, it should be going through town processes and we have a year between now and then to make that, to, to turn it back over in that way. It's without having to make this contract in per- in perpetuity. That's a better use of all of our times because this shouldn't consistently come to us. It's, it's a unique situation.
Mr. Kelly?
Can I try to wrap this up by saying let's, let's do it the, uh, the one year? And, uh, uh, because I don't mind it coming back every year because I get a free pizza free for every time I bring it up in a board meeting. So, uh, uh, so I don't mind. So good. I'm not supposed to say that. Sorry, Paul. So, uh, let's do it for the one year. Let's add the, if we need to, let's add the conditions onto it that, uh, uh, that are being suggested by the other board members. If that's okay, Karen?
Yeah.
Okay. And then let's, uh, let's vote on it. I think we're, we're about to, I think we're about to get it done, Paul.
Karen, you can either rephrase it or you can withdraw, you can withdraw and make it as a new motion or just amend, whatever's easier.
Yeah, I withdrew, I withdraw my prior motion. Now I'd like, now I'd like to make a new motion. The Greenwich Board of Education recognizes the value of the St. Rock Annual Feast for the Hamilton Avenue School Community. The board hereby agrees that the St. Rock Church is permitted to use the Hamilton Avenue Field School property, uh, field court and parking facilities for its annual feast on August 9th through 12th, 2023. The St. Rock Church shall, one, seek and receive the event permit from Parks and Recreation. Two, proactively begin to work with TOG Risk Manager 30 days in advance of annual feast. Retain or hire Greenwich Police Department, GPD, for event security and any additional security subject to GPD's official request. And four, return the fields to the precondition. Oh, pre-feast condition. And five, agree to follow Greenwich Public Schools policies. Laura Costin seconds. Vote. All in favor?
I'm in favor.
That's opposed? Abstain? It wins seven, zero, one.
Karen, you're still up. Irrigation?
I'm looking forward to giving this duty back to you. Uh, okay, great. So, um, I make the following motion. The Board of Education hereby accepts the donation of the immediate installation of the irrigation system from New England Total Landscaping for the Hamilton Avenue School Athletic Fields in order to take advantage of the full growth season and a fully executed five-year maintenance agreement subject to any necessary town permits and insurance as required by the TOG Risk Manager. That's changed. It's five years. Do I have a second? Ms. Costin? Question? Discussion?
Yeah, I have a few questions.
Ms. Doe?
Um, so the contract that was attached actually went through 2038. So isn't that 15 years? It's 2023 to 2038.
Yeah, we need to make that change.
Oh, is there a new revised document?
No, I had the help of Blaze from this one and I'm not blaming Blaze, but it is, um, so we would need to change the contract.
Okay. So the, so they only want five years?
Correct.
Okay. So then we, okay, then I have a few other questions. So they're going to, first of all, I should start off with, of course, we appreciate a gift, but, um, you know, it's like a child who gets a, a free house. They have to pay the taxes, right? And so, um, we need to make sure that we could pay the taxes and, um, that's the maintenance agreement. So I assume that they're paying for the maintenance.
They will be paying for the maintenance for the five years going forward. And I think your next, well, ask your next question.
Water? You think I'm going to ask about water?
Yes, I was going to ask, yeah, I figured water. So yes, water will be taken care of. It will not be provided by the, um, by New England Total Landscaping. It will be divided, it will be, uh, provided by a third party. Um, because we were working on these documents late into the week, we did not get, have it on the calendar and did not have it in time to finalize for you, but I will make the representation. And I have a member of the Catholic Church here who will back me up on the representation that I'm about to make, which is that, uh, water will be paid for, um, up to the first year, up to $3,000. Uh, and then there will be a tab or a water tab put on to the system to track the amount of water that will be used. And then that will be paid for, uh, for five years going forward. A total of five years. So it will be paid for, for five years. So for example, if next year's water, well, there'll be $3,000 paid for. And if the water use is $2,000 next year, there's a thousand dollars in it in the account still. If the next year is, uh, they use $3,000, then there's 1,000 in and 2,000 more will go to pay for the water for the following year. And that will be taken care of over the course of a five-year period.
Okay. Is it, um, holy water? No, I'm kidding. So, um, so I could say, I went to Notre Dame, so you can't, you can't come at me. Um, and so, um, but I, uh, okay, that all sounds great. We need to somehow memorialize that, right? So.
It will be, and it will be in our, at our next meeting. I will make a motion to that effect with the appropriate paperwork. And the, no, 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 we, we can't. It's going to delay the installation and we need to get this going for purposes of making, getting the installation for the growth. That's why we're doing it now.
Can, can I add a suggestion then? So if we, if we get to a gen, I, I think it's appropriate to vote on something once we have the actual correct documents here. If we're going to add an agenda item on Monday to discuss Central Middle School, would waiting till Monday, can we put this on that agenda at the start just as a, if, if that, if that, it, it, by Monday, do you think that, would that be okay? That way.
Well, one, I'm worried that meeting on Monday doesn't get scheduled. Problem number one. And two, I'm, you know, I'm conscious of the fact that we're getting a donation. They're going to put it in on a weekend and we need to get it done. And if, I don't know if this weekend is a possibility for them. I, I don't have that information in front of me, but I don't want to delay this. And I know the water's coming. I also know the church is not going to leave us hanging dry and will provide the necessary water. I'm not worried about that. I worked on that all day. Uh, Ms. Downey?
Um, two things. I don't think they can put it in this weekend because you'd have to get permits and the like.
Good point. So I don't want to, but I don't want to slow the process down. Like they're meeting.
No, no, I should put to the point, if, if we're having a meeting next Monday or Tuesday or Wednesday, I think we're okay. And it gives you time to document it because one of my concerns is that the way this reads, and you're a lawyer too. It says that they will agree to provide the spring startups, et cetera. It doesn't say who's paying for them. That's ambiguous in here. It just says they'll provide the service, but it doesn't say at no cost to the client.
You're saying the spring startups in the sense of?
In paragraph three, it says the service provider agrees to provide the following, but it doesn't say agree to provide them at no cost. All it says is they will actually perform the service, which is obviously, we would want them to perform the service. But if the agreement is that we're not being charged for the service, that has to be explicitly stated, correct? I mean, i- if we're not going to take full action, but we know we, we are, we could maybe take a sense of the meeting so that there's movement forward. But obviously, we can't, they can't do anything, but you know, at least we have an adjustment to the contract.
Well, here's the question.
Pointless to me. People aren't going to support it, but it sounds like there would be support as long as, uh, again, i's are dotted and t's are crossed.
Well, I would, I would call the question when Kathleen comes back. Certainly wouldn't be asking her the motion.
Can I just make it, Joe, just to respond to that? We don't, we're saying that there's, we have an inaccurate document in front of us. So how do we vote on it if we're calling the question? We can, we can, we can accept the gift subject, subject to documentation. The, like, there's a better way to reword it and say, we, we want to accept the gift and we need the documentation filled out properly. For example, just, you know, another thing, um, the Make It Rain says it's 28,000. The form, our donation form says 29,000. It's just, it needs a little cleaning up is all.
So to my earlier point as to, as to, um, to my earlier point as to why the, um, the way our board works, why we need to create a mechanism so that this is not an annual conversation. I do think, getting a sense of the meeting, I, I do think that David probably, I like Ms. Hirsch's idea of postponing this motion until early next week.
So. No, I'm not okay with that. What I would prefer is to make it subject to, because I think we're all in agreement that we are, we, we are accepting the gift and it's subject to some cleanup on some of the paperwork. And again, I think for us, the issue really is the motion and getting it and agreeing that subject to the, the cleanup of the contract to make it sync with what the donation is, we are fine with this and moving forward. So I would withdraw the motion and make it subject to.
And that we would see the ultimate contract would be part of the condition.
Would be a part of the condition, which wouldn't slow them down in getting the necessary.
I'll second that.
Okay. So wait, I got to withdraw the first motion and then make it subject to. So.
Good. Take a second and write it out the way you want. Just give yourself.
Why, well, Kathleen.
All right, hold on.
Well, can can we jump ahead to our next item and then come back to this when we rewrite it?
Yes. So I'm going to withdraw the motion.
Okay. Then we're just going to jump ahead real quick and we're going to have the, uh, uh, next. And Jamie, I am so sorry to have you sit out there and wait so long. Jamie and Sean, could you come up here, please? This is a donation. She's right back there. Yes. This is a, I'll let them talk about it, describe it. Sean has spent a lot, Sean Mayo has spent a lot of time on this. And Jamie is going to talk about the, uh, the donation.
Okay. Thank you. Um, so my name is Jamie Andrea and I wanted to present the opportunity to give a donation to the Greenwich High School. Um, my husband, Chris Andrea passed away in 2021. And after he passed away, we started a fund in his honor. And when I heard that the Greenwich High School was renovating their stadium, um, we thought it would be a good opportunity to use some of the funds that we've collected to give back to the stadium. Chris grew up in Greenwich. He went to Greenwich High School and he was a Greenwich lacrosse coach for the varsity team. And he told me that some of his happiest times were on the field because he was able to give back to the students in terms of coaching them, but then also having them develop into young adults. Um, in the last few years, he developed a passion for film, videography, photography, and ended up managing the content for Greenwich High School lacrosse. So the idea of a broadcast studio, um, seemed like the perfect mix of his passions and being able to give back to the community that he was so happy to be a part of. That kind of combines his passion for lacrosse coaching, um, and the broadcasting piece of it. So, um, on behalf of the Andrea family, we would like to make a donation to the public school um, for this broadcast studio in Chris's honor. And I've worked with Sean to fine tune those details because I'm not a broadcasting expert. So Sean is going to talk a little bit more about that.
Um, I just want to say thank you very much for this donation. Um, it's much appreciated. And thank you, Joe, for facilitating this. Um, it's been a year in the making. I know we've been talking since, uh, last, what, November or so, trying to figure out what we wanted and what we wanted to do with this. Um, and certainly it took a long time for me to, you know, figure out what it was the best thing that we wanted to do for this broadcast booth and making sure that, you know, the donation was going to go, you know, be well worth like what you were going to give us. Um, and I did take some time and Joe knows, I talked to, uh, multiple companies. A lot of people, you know, want a lot of money and, but I figured that the best thing to do was to get a box that actually produces a lot of the stuff that you would want. And it's a small box, but it comes with a lot of utilities and it comes with, um, somebody that I can actually call and talk to about it. And just in case something happens. Um, it also, uh, the donation allows me to buy, uh, some cameras and also all the mini equipment that has to do with setting everything up. So, um, it will be very well used by these kids. The kids are going to like being in the booth. Um, at some point commentating and being up on top and, you know, working the cameras, going to camera one, camera two. And, um, you know, it's going to be something fun for me to bring my, uh, broadcast kids out to and incorporate into the curriculum. So again, I really appreciate this donation.
Let me just, uh, uh, talk a little, a little bit about it. It's the, we have the seven, uh, coaches boxes at, at Cardinal Stadium. And we're taking one of those coaching boxes and we're making it a broadcast studio. And what just, uh, uh, and we're going to have it as a classroom and we're going to have a class and a club and, and, uh, and it's, it's really going to be a, an addition, uh, to our, uh, our program. So thank you for all the work you've done on it. I, I'd like to make a motion to accept this donation. All in favor? I think that's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you so much. Thank you.
Can I just say at the end, a huge thank you as a, as a parent of a student whose life was changed by Sean's broadcast journalism course. I think this is going to give so many students an opportunity, uh, going forward. And, you know, in memory of your, your husband who gave so much of his life, uh, to the Greenwich Public School system. So it's a, it's a big thank you.
Yes, thank you so much. Much appreciated. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Ralph. Karen, should we go back to your motion?
Yes, please. I'd like to make the following motion. Uh, subject to the proper, uh, subject to pay, let's see, sorry. Subject to the proper paperwork updated to reflect the donation of the immediate installation of an irrigation system from New England Total Landscaping for the Hamilton Avenue School Athletic Field in order to take advantage of the growth season. A fully executed five-year maintenance agreement for Let It Rain to service the system, the cost of which New England Total Landscaping will cover for that period of time, subject to any necessary town permits and insurance as required by the TOG Risk Manager. Do I have a second?
What happened to the water?
What happened to the water? Well, I want to go get food.
The water is being provided by a different donation. And we didn't have the proper, we didn't have all the paperwork done in time, nor was it on the. And we didn't have the proper, we didn't have all the paperwork done in time, nor was it on the agenda for the purposes of this meeting. So we'll add it to our next meeting, which we may have early as early as next week. But the water is going to be provided and paid for, for a five-year period.
Well, as long as we have that in there somewhere, even if you don't say provide, as long as it's provided by an app, like you don't have to say who, because it's under our, the cost of which would be under what we are required to approve. So it wouldn't necessarily need to come to us as a separate piece. The ca, the cost of which, if it's, if it's three thousand dollars or less per year for five years, it's less, we, we don't have to approve that.
Okay.
As a gift. So if you just put it as a condition that the, the water will be paid for by a.
Okay. So you want to add.
But you could just say, you know, the, the cost of which would not, you know, the water would, so that we don't, we don't have to come back for another meeting to approve the.
Then we don't have to count it too.
Yeah, it's not our.
In addition, that the, the cost of the water for the next five years will also be provided.
Will be covered by a third party.
Will be covered by a third party. I withdraw my motion. Ms. Costin seconded. I'll read it really fast. And then I'll provide it to you, Karen, later for the, for the, um, for the minutes. Okay. Subject to the proper paperwork updated to reflect the donation of the immediate installation of the irrigation system from the New England Total Landscaping for the Hamilton Avenue School Athletic Field in order to take full advantage of the growth season. And a fully executed five-year maintenance agreement for Let It Rain to service the system. The cost of which New England Total Landscaping will cover. Subject to any necessary town permits and insurance as required by the TOG risk manager. In addition, the cost of the water will be covered by a third party for five years. Do I have a second? Miss Costa. All in favor? Cody?
Yep, in favor.
Thank you. That wins eight zero. Thank you very much.
Not wins, approves.
Approves.
Not win or lose, it's passes.
Okay, superintendent goals for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three. It's on as an action item.
Can I ask a silly question?
You may.
Do we need to approve?
Somebody has to make a motion to bring it onto the table for discussion.
I, I will make a motion. I move to approve the superintendent's goals for two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three as presented.
I'll second that. Discussion. Do you want me to say something? Okay. So, um, I'm not sure why we're doing this now, honestly. But whatever, if everyone wants to just take a vote on it and move on, fine. If not, I think it's kind of, you know, it's like, you know, it's a waste of time. It's April, almost May. I was about to say, we're, we're just about to come up with a review, which is when we go over these. So I'm not sure why we're approving them now. We're almost done with the, the squeer.
Budget.
Unless we're talking about for, you know, a setup for next, next year's goals, but I, I just don't see why.
Well, just to move us along, I took, uh, talked to Dr. Jones and she said she's pretty much good on all the goals. I kind of, when I was thinking about this, going forward in the future, we probably should vote on superintendent goals in a more timely manner, uh, because basically how do we know what we've agreed on unless we vote on it? We can't just say.
We always, we usually do, do them earlier in the year.
All right.
We had a first read and I, I think CMS happened and we, we, we got distracted.
Would anyone mind, we'll just kind of put, put this to a vote and just vote in favor of it and then move it on.
Okay, uh, very good.
Michael, you're running this, right?
So all, all in favor?
Okay. Cody?
He's gone.
Okay.
Opposed.
Gone.
Karen wasn't here, so passed.
Okay, uh, revision to the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year calendar. Dr. Jones?
Now, the board will remember, um, earlier this year, we brought the current year calendar for twenty-two, twenty-three to you because we wanted to try that second conference at elementary. Um, we had great feedback, um, that that was very successful holding those conferences in March. Ninety-four percent of the parents said it was very helpful. Eighty-four percent said they would choose a conference over the report card. Um, and, but along with that, and, and the, the ones that, you know, were kind of iffy, their comments were generally, we want both. But that's not doable, you know, with GEA. So I feel like they really found them valuable and the comments also from the teachers were very positive. Uh, they liked the structure where they had a full day and then an early release day. They didn't feel like it was as rushed. Uh, they liked that we gave them, uh, a Wednesday afternoon to actually prepare for those conferences. And then the other thing from the parents is they felt they were so much more, they actually felt they were more valuable based on their comments. Because the teachers know their students so well in March, that they were able to talk about what they might be able to do over the summer. Uh, for kids who are transitioning, what might be, uh, good for them the next year. So really good feedback. So this calendar just makes that same adjustment again. If you look in, uh, at March, uh, where we're changing a day there, the other thing that, uh, I, that we updated on this calendar is if you look at November the seventh, the election day, instead of trying to do a virtual professional day. Um, because as you know, our teachers do not want to be in school any longer on election day. Um, two years ago, we did have our professional development, but we had some heckling when teachers were entering the building. So we've made that commitment that we will not do that again. But what we did is we have a request from principals and also from teachers, they always want more time. So we took that professional day and moved it to the very first week in August. So now we have an extra day to help teachers prepare, uh, to get ready for their classrooms. So I think it's going to be really, really helpful. And on the seventh, everybody can go vote, do their thing. It's just a day off.
Christina?
Just, just a question. I, I saw you also, um, did we have the, I, I don't remember the previous version of this, the first day of Passover off before? Or that's a new thing too?
No, that, that is not new. That's how the calendar.
That was there. Okay. Um, just about the conferences, I just wanted to talk about. Um, so I think I raised this last month. What if you want, uh, over demand for conferences? Like if, if, if the teachers find like they've, like you're saying, people prefer those to report cards. Will they have enough time, um, to do them with only a day and a half a day? Maybe they do. Um, that's question one. Question two is, uh, does the marking period align, it aligns with the state? Um, the marking period for the elementary? I mean, it's going to be a little funky for middle school, right?
They, the, the, the feedback from the teachers with the, the, and the parents was that they liked it in March and they felt like they had enough time to do it. It, to be honest, they really, some of them would love to change December. They do not like the evening conferences. Um, because it's hard for a teacher when you're, you're working all day and then you're staying through the evening. Um, but it was too hard on the calendar to change that because.
And I think with working parents, you have the opportunity.
Well, you know, but.
Point of order. Point of order. I'm sorry, we forgot to make a motion. Approve the revised two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school calendar as attached. Do I have a second? Karen Hirsch. Discussion. Absolutely.
So just to build on what you're saying about the evening conference, I really don't think it is the same issue that it was, you know, three years ago, normal pre-COVID. Because parents do have lunchtime, they do have breaks and they'll do them virtually. And you, when you think they're only, you know, generally about fifteen minutes long, um, because just simply because of the volume, but parents didn't seem, we didn't get feedback that, a lot of feedback that they really missed having an evening conference. It was, it was very positive.
Karen Hirsch.
Um, well, I, you know, before we make that adjustment, I would love to be able to survey the parents. And I don't know if a survey was sent to parents, how they felt and to get their feedback, um, on adding the second conference, how, how it went for them. Um, I know, we haven't seen anything. Oh, okay. Um, I don't, were, were parents generally selected or did it go to all parents?
It went to all of our, uh, K-five parents that went through the conference experience.
Okay, I, I don't have anybody in K-five, so I don't know.
And we got a good response rate too. I mean, we kept it relatively short, wasn't hard to answer and, and.
Well, I, so my question is more pertaining to the middle school because we've never had a middle school, uh, parent teacher conference. So I know that that was being added and, um, you know, uh, one of our parents had spoken about this before, but I want to make sure that we have an idea ahead of time, or you have an idea ahead of time, how those are going to work so that they're used optimally. It's vastly different going as we all know for elementary, we said one teacher versus going to a middle school where it's multiple teachers. Um, so we want to make sure that our teacher's time is being used, uh, appropriately and it's valuable for parents. But, uh, my, my question then for the K-five though is I, I, before we discuss not having an, an evening, I know oftentimes there are parents that can't access the computer during the day. They're not, you know, even if it's a fifteen minutes, it's also very difficult, uh, sometimes digital connections or there, they have a job that doesn't allow them to stop for fifteen minutes somewhere along the way, even if it's lunch to have this. Or the timing might not work for them if there's multiple people. I think it's exceptionally important, especially for, you know, uh, you know, our parents to have that opportunity to be able to be in person in an evening if, if they'd like to. Sometimes they have questions or sensitive topics that they don't want to talk about in a position where they might have to like, you know, find a spot to talk, uh, while they're busy at work or whatever their other day, their provides.
Darren Kowalski.
Was that, did you have a question? Did you want Tony to respond to that or?
So, so what I was going to say is that.
Late for me, sorry.
We tried to have a second conference that's in the evening. We're not going to have second conferences. I do not believe that we could, uh, work with GEA to come to the table and really get that agreement. Because it, it does change the calendar and it is really hard on teachers, um, you know, to go all the way into the evening and after you've taught all day. Um, and, and because this one worked well and we got positive feedback from teachers and parents, I would love to see us stay the course because we did get a second conference and that's something we all thought was really important. And it, again, it's kind of that, you know, compromise on certain things. And it's kind of like the report card versus the conference. You know, but we're trying to work really well with our teachers so that they feel supported and also the parents feel supported. And we've had good feedback from P-Tech.
So it's just, well, I, so it's just the second conference that you're not going to be offering in person in the evening?
No.
Nothing in the evening?
We're not doing evening. We, it's all, one full day. And then it is, um, an early release day. So it actually, on your early release day, it's a Wednesday. So it does go later. Uh, it just doesn't go like into the evening, but it does go later. And I will tell you to be honest, our, our teachers are great. I mean, all year long, if a parent calls and they're really concerned about their child, and I'm sure all of you have had this experience, your, your teachers will meet with you. Um, but we, but there's a difference in saying we're going to have evening conferences and everybody must be in the building and be rostered. I, I, I think our, our teachers work with the parents if, if we have a parent that has.
As long as there's an understanding, if there's, you know, a one or two off situation where a parent doesn't have the opportunity to meet during the day, that they won't lose the opportunity. Okay.
Karen?
So since we're looking at the calendar again, and I talked about this before, and since we're taking it up, well, this was, was with respect to last time's calendar. I just raised the issue again, since we would be in school, uh, subject to snow days, um, on June nineteenth. And I did take a look the last time around and those districts that were not, that, there were a lot of surrounding districts in the state of Connecticut that aren't in school that late in the time period. But those schools that are in school on June nineteenth do observe that day. And I would ask that for the sake of, um, June nineteenth, I think it's important that we as a community adopt that as a day off if we are going to be in school on that day. And I know we talked about that there is the component that the, um, governor passed or signed into law that says you can teach something, um, in regards to making sure that there's an educational component on that day. If you, if the kids are in school as opposed to observing it. And I think, uh, Mr. Mercanti Anthony had said, or, you know, it's like the last day of school, really, what are we going to do? And I think we need to be fair as to what we're going to be do there. So rather than try to come up with something, I would propose we add that as a day off if in fact we're in school on that day.
So I did go out and, and look at Fairfield County. We are about the only school district, maybe one other that even presses that late into June. And it's because we have the full February break, most districts. So even though they show that they're off, unless we have a really, really bad winter, they'll never make the nineteenth like us. But I will say I only had, after we talked about this at the last meeting, positive comments and, and from some parents. Because they, I think they trust us because when you look at what we do on Veterans Day, our kids are so much better, uh, with us than they are if we were out of school because most of them would just be a day out of school. And I feel like June nineteenth is going to be exactly the same. And we've made a, a commitment. You saw our whole curriculum team here tonight. We're not just planning one day. They're planning on lead-up activities and they're already working on that. And I think, I think we're going to make it a really great learning opportunity for students and beyond just one day of information. And I, I think it's a great opportunity. Most of our kids, if we're out of school that day, will not attend anything. And, and the families that want to go to a special, unique event, we would always allow that.
Look, I appreciate it. I just, I raise it again because I, I am concerned. I do think it, we need to send that message into the community that we as a community respect that day. I understand we're in school on Veterans Day and I know that all of the elementary schools, particularly, that's what I've had my experience with, do really special things on those days. And so my point is we're either out or we're doing something exceptionally special for that historic day. And that's, it's truly important. And I think we need to do it as a community, particularly in the divisive times that we're in, we need to show our ultimate support as an entire district.
Michael?
Yeah. I, I don't, I want, I don't want to belittle the point or belabor the point, I should say. The, uh, I think we'll, we'll see, we'll see how it goes. I, I think June nineteenth is a new state holiday. I am skeptical, um, that it's going to be a day that we're going to be able to remain a school day for long. I think as this evolves, much like Martin Luther King Day and things like that, I think there's going to be a growing understanding in the community that it's going to have to be a day off. But let's see how it goes.
Okay, should I call the question? I shall. In favor, put your hand up, please. That seems to be just about, Michael, yeah, everybody. So that's seven, zero, zero. Blaze, you still awake?
I'm here. I'm here.
Excellent. You're up.
Hello, hello. Okay. So, uh, yeah, I gotta talk to Mike about my order in the agenda. No, I'm just kidding. Uh, okay. So, uh, action items, we have two budget transfers. Remember, um, just as a reminder for everybody, for, uh, transfers require board action. If you're moving funds across major object code, major objects, you know, your one hundreds, two hundreds, three hundreds, four hundreds.
Blaze, I've, I've got to stop you there for a second. I think we have to put this up for a motion first. Sorry. I did not do.
Thank you.
Authorized transfers for the period ending March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Do I have a second or? I do. Christina is going to second it. Blaze, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Continue.
Well, no problem. No. Uh, yeah, I mean, there they are. So that you, we, their, their board required transfers because of the dollar amount and we're crossing. You can just see the one hundred to the two hundred. So that's moving from funds from salary, uh, to, to, um, supply or from services to salary, making those changes, those required board approval. It's that time of year right now. We're actually trying to meet with managers, uh, but really good, and I do a lot of bunch of transfers and cleaning things up and principles and, or also, uh, the finance meeting with, um, kind of everyone trying to think through their end of year, uh, planning. And so, I've got a message at the hostess table in my video, but hopefully that's okay. And, um, we just need, the hostess doing, you're reminding me, okay. So we basically just need your approval. So it's IT. Uh, the first one is IT. It's just covering, um, uh, the cybersecurity charges uh, that are being paid for, for, by professional services. And the second one is moving funds from, uh, seven hundreds, which are our settlement, settlement account to help cover invoices at the deficit that we talked about earlier in special ed that we still have to absorb.
Okay. Either Blaze cut off or he stopped talking.
I'll take questions. I stopped talking. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Any questions for Blaze? I seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor, raise your hand. Blaze, you win unanimously. Seven, zero.
Thank you.
Passes. Good night, Blaze.
Bye, everybody.
Thank you. Okay, agenda, plan, discussion.
Can I?
Do we, oh, there's hands up. Kathleen, you've been quiet.
I know, right? I have a question. Summer classes, did we approve that? And I missed it. Did we do? Summer school? We did? And is that posted and everything?
These, but not the program.
It's all posted. For kid, okay. All right. I just don't remember that. Okay, thank you. Bye. No, just at the summer class, we approved them and because. Like, for example, we added the geometry class. This is what I'm thinking about. That's. Okay. You don't remember that either? Okay, see?
Now, is this the point of the meeting when we change our meeting in June? So it's not the same evening as graduation? Uh, yes. I propose we change it to June 14th. We talked about it, but we didn't officially do it. So I guess this is the time we officially do it. Flag day. So bring a flag. Okay, so we'll flag it as a change. Thank you.
I don't know what the procedure is with, I think we, I, I don't know, we don't have to make a motion, do we? Yeah. Mike Attenasio, if he's still listening out.
We don't have, you don't have to make a motion. It will likely become. A special meeting. I have to check on how many days out it is without having, with it maintaining the budget, the board meeting calendar schedule, but I will. I'll get, but it does not require a vote. Thank you.
I hope it's not Laura.
So can we commit to a Monday meeting? With. Two items on the agenda?
Michael, how quick or how much in advance do we have to announce a special meeting?
It would have to be tomorrow before. The town hall closes at about four, so probably like 3:30 maximum for hosting.
I will call you in the morning to arrange this. Thank you. Thank you, Laura.
Ms. Hirsch asked about the two items. It would be. Our. Our working groups recommendations and also. Municipal improvement for CMS.
Thank you. Kathleen?
On Monday, you, I mean, I'm sure you remember you're at the Community Service Awards, right? So. Those are at five? Okay, so then they go to typically a 6:30 or so, right? So I don't know if you want to do it right after that is my point on Monday. Seven o'clock or something like that.
Yep, we'll work on that tomorrow.
And Kathleen's already offered to order the food.
Nice, again.
Well, about the ovaries.
And for the May meeting, because of the Harpoon Club, we're changing that. I'm just kidding. Look at Kathleen, she got angry. All right, Michael, we can't go to the Harpoon Club meeting. This is because we have a Board of Ed meeting. Yes. We tried to, but I was, it was unpopular.
We want to come.
I've been here on my anniversary and my birthday. So at some point or time, you could miss me, you know.
If we, if we change the meeting, we want to go.
Yeah, it's a Title IX issue, so we're welcome. We'll go if you want.
So I think, I'm sorry about the time, everybody. I think Laura, it's time for a motion from you.
Motion to adjourn.
Christina?
So did we agree we're meeting on Monday?
We are going to talk about it tomorrow.
Because we're going to have to talk quickly. That's why I'm saying like, do you want to get a sense of.
Michael said by town.
No, 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 no. Availability.
Sense of.
In the room. Sense of the room.
Sense of the room.
If, if you can make, if you can make Monday.
If you would make Monday, put your hand up.
Can we be, can we be virtual or do we have to do?
Virtual.
Okay.
Oh, hybrid, whatever it is, you could be on the TV screen. We'll figure it out. Talk to Michael about that tomorrow. The availability is here. All right, we're good.
But it might. It actually might be kind of better to be remote if you're just simply because you can have, at least I can have big screens up of all this stuff. I have big screens.
Okay, ready for that motion? I'll second it. All in favor? Thank you, everybody. Very productive meeting.